Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council and Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, November 28, 2006. This time we'll call the meeting to order. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Glancy?
Here.
Mayor Gillette?
Here.
Item four, Special Announcements and Requests for Continuance of Any Public Hearing or Agenda Item. City Clerk, anything? Anyone else? There are none then. Item five, Special Presentations. Two special presentations this evening and I'll go down to the dice to percela. We have two special presentations this evening. The first is a commendation is for the title sponsor of the recently-held Thousand Oaks Police Department Charitable Foundation Golf Tournament. Ron Kruger, Executive Vice President and Chief Financial Officer of Pleasant Holidays is here to receive the commendation for Pleasant Holidays. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say that a lot of executives this year at Pleasant Holidays really got involved in the tournament and really liked the opportunity to take part in this, which I, we all feel, is a great community event. And there's been a lot of companies that have played an important part in it and probably are as deserving of this award, but I don't think there's another company that's going to appreciate this more because this event has become a big part of Pleasant Holidays. So, thank you, City Councilman.
Well, Ron, thank you very much. And, a couple of things. First of all, it's my privilege to present this commendation in honor of Pleasant Holidays. The Thousand Oaks Police Charitable Foundation presented the 2006 Charity Golf Tournament on October 30, 2006, at the North Ranch Country Club. And Pleasant Holidays, which is headquartered in Westlake Village, is a strong supporter of our community and their title sponsorship of this year's event helped it to be the largest and most successful tournament in the police department's history. And this year, 200 golfers from throughout the community joined together for an exciting day of golf in support of the many police volunteer programs hereby directly benefiting our community. And the 2006 Thousand Oaks Police Charitable Foundation Golf Tournament enjoyed the success it had due to the tremendous support and leadership of our title sponsor, Pleasant Holidays. Therefore, I, Dennis C. Gillette, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire City Council, to hereby commend Pleasant Holidays for their continuing sponsorship of the vital police volunteer programs which serve our community and support our outstanding police department. Ron, again, thank you so very much. Now... I don't want this to fall apart. That goes on there. That, that, and...
Thank you.
Thanks again. Thank you so very much. And now, if I could have Police Chief Dennis Carpenter, who will present the platinum sponsors. Chief?
Thank you very much. Good evening. Yes, we want to honor our platinum sponsors who gave, I believe it was $5,500 this year to be a part of this tournament and able to help us raise over $75,000, as they were saying. Representing Amgen Corporation, we have Tom Sumner, Assistant, or, excuse me, Vice President, Security. Rick Limo from Caruso, although he couldn't be here tonight, but Caruso is one of our sponsors. Representing Dollar Rent a Car, Ron Kruger. We wouldn't have Dollar Rent a Car if Ron Kruger hadn't gone out and twisted a few arms. No criminal violations occurred, correct? Representing Silver Star, I don't believe Susan was here, but Susan Marata from Silver Star is part of our platinum sponsors. From Mace Ridge, the Oaks, representing the Oaks tonight, we have Julia Land. Julia is Senior Property Manager from the Oaks. And representing Ventura County Deputy Sheriff's Association, President Matt Finley, also one of our patrol sergeants here in Thousand Oaks. And I don't think P-6 Restaurant was here tonight, was it? Okay. P-6 Restaurant Lounge and Suki Seven are also our platinum sponsors. We couldn't do it without our title sponsor and these platinum sponsored folks. Thank you very much, all of you. And a couple of you could just, my Board of Directors, if you could just stay up here real quick, I wanted to recognize the Board of Directors. President Rick Limo, who wasn't here, able to be here tonight. Our Vice President of the Board, Thousand Oaks Police Charitable Foundation, is Tom Sumner. Our Treasurer, Carl Allenese. Ron Kruger is one of the board members. Bob Wilson's a board member. Louis Masri's a board member. Scott Mitnick is one of our advisors. Keith Parks, former police chief, couldn't be here tonight, one of our advisors. And David Stern from Westlake, one of our advisors. We couldn't do it without these folks working year-round, behind the scene, meeting once a month, making decisions and planning for this event. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Our second presentation is a proclamation for November as National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. Marcia Ortiz, Area Director of Ventura County Alzheimer's Association, is here to tell us more about National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. Marcia?
Thank you. Please. I'd like to thank the council and Mayor Gillette. And, you know, Alzheimer's is a disease that affects seniors, but it also affects families and communities. And it is for that reason that I am very thankful that Thousand Oaks Council and Mayor Gillette have chosen to endorse November as the Alzheimer's Awareness Month. And thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Marcia. Now, if you wait just one minute, please. It is my privilege to present this proclamation in honor of Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. Ventura County Alzheimer's Association is a local resource that provides numerous services for families, caregivers, and patients affected by Alzheimer's and other forms of dementia. And Alzheimer's disease affects more than 4.5 million Americans and is expected to grow to between 11.3 million to 16 million by 2050. And Alzheimer's disease is most affected by increasing age, and our community is blessed with, enriched by our seniors. And there are currently many Thousand Oaks residents who either have Alzheimer's disease, have lost someone to it, or are currently dealing with a loved one affected by the disease. Now, therefore, I, Dennis C. Gillette, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim November 2006 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and urge all citizens to offer support to families affected by Alzheimer's disease. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Would the clerk please call the item?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for City Council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Three people have presented cards. In pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Our first speaker this evening, Mr. Jerry Robings, followed by Mr. Bob Wilson. I would remind the speakers to please give your name and community of residence. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Robings.
To the council, my name is Jerry Robings, a resident of Thousand Oaks. When I read the ad in the newspaper for an organization known as Save Our Ring of Green, I was intrigued. I was intrigued first by the audacity of a group apparently asserting credit for all of the current and past members of the council who, along with Tex Ward of the Ricken Parks, have spent the past 40 years obtaining our ring of open space. But I was also intrigued by their claim to have a 501(c)(3) status by the Internal Revenue Service. Although I'm not an expert in the IRS code, I have had some experience with a nonprofit organization, and I can tell you that a 501(c)(3) status is not easy to come by. I searched the Secretary of State website, and I found no corporation filing for the Save Our Ring of Green organization, nor are they listed on the Attorney General's website for charities. In view of this, I have written a letter to the IRS asking for their review of the 501(c)(3) status stating the Save Our Ring of Green organization is not a religious, a charitable, a scientific literary, or an educational organization, but rather, they are an advocacy group attempting to block development in an area they would like to see designated as open space. I think it's a shame that people cannot, for whatever reason, cannot give credit to this council for what they have accomplished at Mount Clef, for the years of negotiations to obtain the properties that you have obtained and the willingness to make the large financial sacrifice to purchase that land. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bob Wilson, followed by Mr. Nick Kidway.
Mr. Bob Wilson, I live in the City of Thousand Oaks. I want to thank the council candidates that ran for reelection and congratulate them. Claudia Bill De La Peña, Andy Fox, Dennis Gillette. The city spoke loud and clear, and I think our city's in good hands. Obviously, there were no issues, and in those kind of conditions incumbents do well. And congratulations to all three of you. I am here tonight to make sure that, and this is the last meeting, it's the starting of four more years of council for you, for the council people that were elected. And one of the things that I think rules should be followed is that when you took your oath to become a council person, you said that you would keep an open mind on issues that were brought before you. And at a recent candidate debate, Councilwoman De La Peña expressed her disapproval of the building of a home up in the Mount Clef area. And I would think that that's, I would think that she would not vote on this issue, considering that she has already determined that she's opposed to it. And I think we need to start this off correctly this coming years, is that if you have an opinion and you sit on the council, you need to keep an open mind, and you can't express it to the public until it's time. This is good council. It's good government. We've had a great four years. Our city's doing very well. Let's hope we can continue that in the next four, but we must follow the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nick Kidway, followed by Suzanne Duckett.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Egbal Kidway, resident of Niberry Park. And Dr. Glancy, there he is. Last time I checked, still Director of Concern, Citizens of Thousand Oaks. I enjoyed, I don't know if I really enjoyed, but I stayed home and watched you folks on the internet at the last meeting. Did not really feel like coming. Want to congratulate the winners of the election. This time, I was 100% accurate, both the school board and the city council. I predicted all the incumbents to come in. I had no horse in the race, so it was easy to be unbiased. And it's interesting that around the country, even from the governor to the other races, that the electorate voted for the middle of the road and rejected extremism. But unfortunately, in our city, and one of the reasons we have this war, if I can call it, in the council level at the local elections, is because the moderates, average, good, hard-working people of the city do not want to be involved in the, in the politics, and they don't come forward. And we have extremes from one side, that is basically a no-growth faction, to one that really doesn't know what PNL is, because they come from the government sector, et cetera, and they feel it's their obligation to prove themselves to be pro-business. And we had some good candidates. We had a great school board member that came from the business sector. But then again, being from the business sector doesn't necessarily guarantee, because in order to get things achieved at the council level, when you're dealing with government bureaucrats and when you're dealing with the news media and all that, requires, you're not like a CEO that is in control and can make changes by just signing on the dotted line, et cetera. I was disappointed that no changes were made in the sign ordinance, and as I had predicted and from the past, all candidates were just reckless in abusing them. One council member who voted against the spine center and is against every signs, her sign was on the 101 freeway up until three days ago, on the fence. It has been finally taken off. Mr. Fox put his sign up in open space. It was just taken off over the weekend, or maybe five days ago. And business signs are not allowed above the rooftop. Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Fox's sign was above the towing place. So, you should look and make changes and be more open, so that it's fair to everyone. Thank you. Congratulations.
Suzanne, our last speaker under public comment is Suzanne Duckett.
Good evening. I really wanted to come here tonight to talk about the loss of Channel 50, internal classic movie, but of course, there are more important things on the agenda tonight. One is losing a wildlife corridor space, more loss of wildlife corridor space. And they're going to get up here tonight and tell you how, that it's not so bad, but I want all of you voters out there, wherever you are, to pay attention to how these people vote and to not pay attention to what they send you in the mail, which is bogus. So, that's the first thing. And since they're going to render more wildlife homeless, I think that this should be a city of the homeless, since we're going to have more wildlife out there running on our streets. I think we should bring more homeless to our community. Since we're going to have a discussion of a lone, L-O-N-E, vision of the, our boulevard out here, that I think that it's a good time to talk about bringing the homeless from downtown LA. We could certainly house more of them at the Oaks Mall. They could panhandle at the Oaks Mall. And I'm very happy to load up a bunch of, you know, I have a warm spot in my heart for schizophrenics. I can load up a bunch of schizophrenics on the buses and bring them out here and show them how great it is out here, along our boulevard, because we're going to have a lot of businesses and high-rises, or at least three stories and above. So, I want everybody to pay attention to the agenda tonight, to see how all these people are going to be voting on these issues that are extremely important to how we live out here in Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment section of the agenda. Item seven, Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar, pleasure of the council. There are two items that Dr. Glancy was not present for. If you'd give me those, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, items A and M. Both of those items I should abstain because of my absence last meeting.
All right. We'll pull items A and M on the first go-around. Anything else? Mrs. Bill De La Peña?
Item M?
M is already, M is already off for...
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Is that the only one? I'm sorry. Is that it? Just the one? Okay. All right. Pleasure of the council. Mrs. Irwin?
I'll move the rest of the consent calendar.
Okay. Motion is move consent calendar, all items except A and M. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item A, with the recusal of Dr. Glancy. There's an abstention from Dr., Mrs. Irwin.
I'll move item A.
I have a motion. Comment to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 4-0. Councilmember Glancy abstaining.
Thank you. Item M was both Dr. Glancy and Mrs. Bill De La Peña wish to have it held separately. Do you have a comment on the item, Mrs. Bill De La Peña?
No, just for consistency purposes, I do need to vote against item M, which deals with the wireless facility at Crest Haven. I made it clear that the council did have discretion, in my opinion, to deny that, so I will, as I voted originally against it, I also have to vote against it on the consent calendar.
Okay, that's fine. Then, council, we'll look for a motion with, with Dr. Glancy not in this one. Mr. Fox?
Is that item M?
Item M, yes.
Okay. I'm moving item M.
I have a motion for item M. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 3-1. Councilmember Bill De La Peña dissenting. Councilmember Glancy abstaining.
Public hearings, item eight. Would the clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A. Appellant, Save Our Ring of Green Social and Environmental Entrepreneurs Incorporated, applicant Michael and Charlene Dubin. Appeal or Planning Commission decision approving Hillside Plan Development 2002-80 for construction of one single-family detached dwelling located approximately 1,000 feet north of terminus of Briar Bluff Circle, 355 Briar Bluff Circle. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for City Council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Eleven people have presented speaker cards. In pursuant to council standards, the appellant and the applicant will each receive 15 minutes, and each will receive a five-minute rebuttal. The remaining speakers will receive three minutes each, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. At this time, staff report, Community Development Director, John Prescott. Mr. Prescott, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I will give some brief introductory remarks and then turn it over to members of my staff and, and our environmental consultant. First of all, I'd like to call the council's attention to some material we provided in your supplemental packet of this evening. There is a fact sheet regarding the project. This is the Dubin Project, HPD 2002-80, that answers some frequently asked questions, if you will. Secondly, we've included in that same packet a brief memorandum transmitting a color aerial photograph. Some of you may have received multiple copies of it, but there is really only one photograph that shows the original picture in vicinity of the project, including the 1.2 mile width that's mentioned in some of the comments by the appellant. We have behind, on the wall behind staff here, you see a display-sized copy of that same map. The project exhibits are located on the opposite side. They show the grading plan and the architectural elevations of the one-single-family home, which is the subject of tonight's appeal hearing. We, I'd also like to indicate that our staff presentation, we will have senior planners, Ed Renkey and Greg Smith, making the presentation along with Mark Towne, our COSCA manager. Mr. Renkey is the project planner on the application, and Mr. Smith is the environmental planner. We also have in the audience and available for questions, Mr. Joe Power of Raincon Associates, who is the consultant that the city hired to prepare the environmental impact report for this project. So, this is an appeal hearing. The Planning Commission has approved the project. An organization has appealed that to council, and it's the council's role tonight to adjudicate that appeal. And without further ado, I will turn it over to Mr. Renkey. We do have a PowerPoint presentation. We've organized it in a manner that's consistent with a staff report, and there will be some handoffs between staff members as they take different parts of the presentation.
The project description. It's a request to build one single-family detached home on an existing 6.81 acre parcel of record. It's located at 335 Briar Bluff Circle on a driveway 1,000 feet north of Briar Bluff Circle. The house is split-level with 6,030 square feet of living area and 1,680 square feet of floor area in two garages. The property is owned Hillside Plan Development, single-family detached residence. And this is a, an aerial view of the, of the site, showing the site boundaries and its relationship to Wildwood Park, the open space that has been acquired by the city, and existing residential development to the south, and existing residential development to the north in the Santa Rosa Valley. The project is, is not... The project is, is not located on a ridge line. It's on the Santa Rosa Valley side, north of the ridge line. The project concludes, includes a four-acre conservation easement as permanent open space. The project maintains a minimum 600-foot width of unencumbered open space for wildlife The property parcel four was part of a 25.7 acre four-lot subdivision, LD 249, which was recorded in 1974. Hillside Plan Development Permit 2002-80 originally requested development of four single-family dwellings on four existing lots of record. The applicant sold three parcels of, to the city for permanent natural open space. The request now is for one single-family dwelling. On October 9th this year, Planning Commission certified the final environmental impact report, 320, and approved application for HPD 2002-80, the revised one-home-on-one-lot project. On October 18th, 2006, an appeal was filed by Save Our Ring of Green Social and Environmental Entrepreneurs Incorporated, and their request is for the council to deny the application.
I'm going to go over some site photos of the subject property, and this is a view, obviously looking west. This is of the southwestern portion of the subject property. Uh, Wildwood Park is over the, well, just on the west side of that existing white fence on the left side, and extends over the ridge line to the west. This photo shows the, again, southwestern portion of the lot, including the proposed pad area, which is in the lower right-hand portion of the image where that existing graded road is. Uh, so this gives you an idea of what the existing terrain is at the proposed site. In this photo, looking southwest, you can see the same fence lines that we just saw in the two previous images on the upper-left part of this slide. In this photo, was actually taken from one of the parcels that the city purchased as open space. This is taken from Lot Two, which is the northeastern lot in that four-lot original design. So, you're looking at the, most of the subject parcel in this photo. This is taken from the road that again exists and leads to the proposed pad area. This is looking north toward the Santa Rosa Valley. You can see it in the distance, and you can also see in this image the ravine, which is referenced in the staff report. And basically, everything that you can see just about in this photo that is part of this lot would be included within the proposed conservation easement area. And I should also note that the northern portion of this ravine, in fact, is part of Lot One, which was one of the three that the city purchased as open space earlier this year. And here again, we're looking south. This is from that road that we just saw in the previous image. This is taken near the northeastern portion of the subject property, looking back toward both a portion of the conservation easement in the foreground, and then the proposed development site in the background. And this view from Santa Rosa Road is showing the, again, the approximate area of the subject parcel, and it is located basically just south of the saddle. Up there, you can see Knack Cliff Ridge Line extends up to the left, and then you have a saddle and then a little peak on the right. The little peak on the right is all within Wildwood Park. Uh, and this single house is proposed below the saddle, that you can see in the middle of this image. And then a little bit more distant view, again, showing the same saddle and, and the proposed development site, which is located is just below that, on the north side of the saddle.
The site plan shows the driveway coming from the south property line, and the location of the house is in the southerly part of the site to maximize the amount of open space area on the north portion of the property. Retaining walls have been used to reduce the amount of grading. The driveway follows the natural contours of a previously graded road, and the, um, a large portion of the house is also on a previously graded pad area. The house is parallel to the slope, um, although there are, there are no contours shown on the site plan. There are no manufactured slopes exceeding 25 feet in height. The building elevations, it's a Spanish Mediterranean design with a stucco finish and natural earth tone colors. It's a split-level house with roof, stepping-back roof elements. The roofs are designed to be parallel with the slope, and the architecture is compatible with, with other homes in the area. This is a, another larger site plan, showing the property in relationship to adjacent parkland and open space and existing development. It shows the subject property boundaries, and it identifies the approximate location of the, approximately four-acre conservation easement. And the conservation easement helps to increase the area of open space and the, the wildlife Staff analysis. The property is located within the HPD zone, where the primary, primary objective is to preserve the natural terrain through minimal grading. The applicant proposes to develop 14.92 acres of the 6.81 acre site and leave approximately 86% of the lot in an ungraded condition. Approximately four acres, 59% of the lot, will be included in a conservation easement that will preserve it as open space. Encroachment within the 25% natural slope is unavoidable, since the average slope of the property exceeds 40% gradient, and there are only very small areas less than 25% gradient. And the home site includes pockets of less-deep plan. The home is comparable in size, 6,030, 30 square feet of living area, to the adjacent two homes to the south. The graded pad is also comparable in size to the pads of those two homes. The design of the house has been stepped into the slope, and retained walls utilized to minimize the use of manufactured slopes. The single-family dwelling complies with precise plan of design architectural guidelines. The home is not on the ridge line. The roof is 69 feet below the saddle on the ridge line above, and will not alter the silhouette of that ridge line. The home is not visible from any city or county designated scenic highways or the core areas of the city of Thousand Oaks. Environmental review. Final EIR 320 was certified by the commission prior to rendering this decision on HPD 2002-80. The EIR evaluates the original project application, which consisted of four residential dwellings on four existing lots, as well as the one-lot development alternative. The applicant, the applicant sold three of the four parcels to the city for preservation as natural open space. One single-family dwelling on one lot is being evaluated. The EIR concludes that unavoidable significant environmental impacts can be reduced to a less-than-significant level under the proposed one-lot development for the following reasons. Grading of natural landforms into 25% slope areas is reduced from 2.09 acres to 0.57 acres. The conservation element, wildlife movement corridor, is increased to a minimum unobstructed width of 600 feet from a previous 200-foot minimum, 250-foot minimum under a four-unit project design. The appellant's grounds for appeal, number one, water quality impacts in the Cuyegus Creek watershed. Specifically, the EIR does not address cumulative impacts to water quality from other projects in the area. Staff response. Specific quantitative pollutant loading reductions must be attained in accordance with the Ventura County Stormwater Quality Urban Impact Mitigation Plan. That is required. Also, the proposed onsite wastewater disposal system has been reviewed and determined to be technically feasible. Appellant's grounds for appeal, number two, biological and wildlife impacts. The EIR provides inadequate analysis in terms of mountain lion and desert wood rat. Staff response. The draft EIR was circulated review by the California Department of Fish and Game, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and the National Park Service. No comments were received indicating the EIR was inadequate in terms of its analysis One, one lot, the one-lot alternative reduces the adverse effects by creating a wider, unobstructed 600-foot-wide movement corridor for larger animals such as mountain lions. No San Diego wood rats have been observed or known to exist onsite. Applicant's grounds for appeal, number three, the EIR does not analyze reducing the house size, house and pad size, the driveway length, or positioning the home closer to the current terminus of the easement driveway. Reducing, uh, it also does not, um, reducing, our response, I'm sorry. Reducing the building pad size does not significantly increase the width of the proposed wildlife movement corridor, which is 600 feet at its narrowest point. If a building pad was shrunk by 50% in size, the actual width of the wildlife movement corridor would be enlarged by only approximately 15 to 20 feet. If a building pad and driveway were shifted toward the access easement, the area, that area is steeper than the proposed home site itself. As a result, a significant portion of which, is, a significant portion of which is nearly level, and additional grading would be required. Grounds for appeal, number four, the EIR provides inadequate project descriptions since a one-lot development is now the project. The commission and council must be presented with sufficient information about project alternatives and their potential impacts to wildlife and water quality. Staff response. The project approved by the commission is one of the alternatives to the four-lot project that was, in fact, analyzed in EIR. SEQA allows the city to approve an alternative project if the city finds the alternative to have less of an impact on the environment. Alternative, the alternative project approved by the commission was analyzed in the recirculated EIR. There is no requirement to modify a project description merely because the decision-making body approves something other than the original project described in the EIR. Grounds for appeal, number five. The EIR mischaracterizes the law in saying that there is no inconsistency because grading is limited to house and driveway. Staff response. The municipal code allows minimal grading to accommodate a building pad and driveway access for a single-family residence, does not specify sizes for homes or pads. Also, grading for this split-level home is limited to the building pad and driveway Proposed building, the proposed building pad is smaller in size than the two existing one-story homes located directly to the south. Also, the percentage of total grading for, for this lot is less than the two lots to the south because of its larger size. Grounds for appeal, six. Zoning was not met. City, the city's objective within the HPD zone is to preserve natural hillside terrain, quality environment, and preserve the aesthetic character of the city while encouraging creative, innovative, and safe residential development on hillsides. Response. Exceptions provided in HPD zone for properties exceeding 35% natural grade allow minimal grading for a dwelling and a driveway. The HPD don't, HPD zone does not specifically define minimal grading. Grading for house, pad, and driveway represents 14% of the lot and leaves approximately 86% of the lot in a natural ungraded condition. Also, the proposed house location is in the least-deep portion of the site, in line with the HPD zone policy. Extensive grading has been avoided through the use of retaining walls. Grounds of appeal, number seven. At 7,770 square feet, this building is not the minimum amount of development. Minimum is the least possible. It is the largest house in this area of Thousand Oaks. Also, the width of the wildlife movement corridor would be increased if the house, if the size of the house were reduced. Also, the development design does not materially reduce, oh, does not materially reduce grading and disturbance of natural, of the natural character of the area, and hence is not in the spirit of compatibility with the purposes and policies of the HPD zone. Response. The HPD, HPD zone does not specify home sizes, but allows minimal grading for dwelling and driveway where the average slope exceeds 35% natural grade. The building footprint for the proposed split-level home is smaller in size than the building footprint of two existing one-story homes directly to the south. Proposed grading, the proposed graded area for the house pad is comparable to homes to the south. Grounds of appeal, number eight. The density of the project at .14 dwelling units per gross acre exceeds the maximum allowable HPD, HPD density of .1 dwelling units for gross acre for this lot, and is not in the spirit of, and compatible with, the purposes and policies of the HPD ordinance. Response. Section 9.4, point, 9-dash, 4-point, 3105 of the municipal code governs allowable density and provides that each parcel shall be permitted at least one dwelling unit. The project consists of one dwelling unit on one parcel. The project complies with the maximum density. Grounds of appeal, number nine. The project is inconsistent with the policies relating to prohibition of grading in slopes over 25% natural grade and design of urban land uses adjoining natural open space areas that are sensitive to the needs of wildlife, and avoid or minimize potential adverse impacts to movement corridors. Response. Policy, conservation element policy, number six, discourages grading in slopes over 25% natural grade. Commission and/or city council may approve such grading. Grading in slopes over 25% natural grade is unavoidable to develop the property. Home sites located in an area of property that minimizes 24, the home site is located in an area of the property that minimizes 25% slope encroachment. Conservation element policy 20- Conservation element policy, 27: The project adequately protects the wildlife movement corridor as it will now expand it to 600 feet at its narrowest point. Grounds of appeal, number 10: The design does not maximize the protection of the Mount Clough Ridge wildlife movement corridor. The design is inconsistent with general plan policies of the conservation element related to the preservation, restoration, and enhancement of wildlife movement corridors for biological productivity of natural open space and design of urban land uses that are sensitive to the needs of wildlife and their movement corridors. This is a choke point on an extended habitat linkage running from Point Magoo State Park to the Los Padres National Forest. A major new study by South Coast Wildlife partnered with the National Park Service, the US Forest Service, and California state parks and conservation groups recommends a corridor width of 1.2 miles. Response: The proposed minimum unobstructed width of the Mount Clough Ridge wildlife movement corridor will be about 600 feet wide. City-established wildlife movement corridors within Dos Vientos, Lang Ranch, North Ranch specific plans have a minimum 250-foot width. A 1.2-mile corridor has not existed for decades in this area and is therefore impractical. In this location, a 1.2-mile corridor would extend from Olson Road to Santa Rosa Road. This area includes several residential developments north of Olson Road and in the Santa Rosa Valley, also the north campus of the California Lutheran University. Appellant grounds for appeal, number 11: A very large house in a controversial area. It is the largest house in this area of Thousand Oaks and is inappropriate for the ring of open space. The developer hasn't attempted to meet with neighbors and discuss the final design for The proposed home is... Staff response: Proposed home is one of the largest in the area but is also on one of the largest lots. There are two existing homes south of the project which are about 1,000 square feet smaller in size. The pad size is smaller than the two existing single-story homes to the south due to the split-level design. The home is on the other side of the ridgeline from Thousand Oaks proper. The city encourages applicants to discuss proposed projects with neighbors but cannot require this. Appellants' grounds of appeal, number 12: The project has no use shed protection for Santa Rosa Valley residents such as a burn to screen the home. Staff response: Burn is not warranted because the home is located on a hillside below the crest of the Mount Clough ridgeline. There will be no silhouetting of the home above the ridgeline as viewed from the Santa Rosa Road or any developed areas of Thousand Oaks. Staff recommendation: Deny the appeal. Uphold the decision by the planning commission to certify the EIR, adopt the mitigation monitoring program, and approve HPD 2002-80 to allow construction of one single-family home on a 6.81-acre existing parcel of record based on the findings set forth in the staff report with revised language to condition number 41 in the staff report. And staff is available for any questions. Thank you. Questions of staff? Mrs. Irwin?
I had a couple of questions. The first is that this corridor goes right to the 23, and to me, that sounds like a bigger choke point than 600 feet. How do the animals travel past the 23?
There is a drainage culvert that goes under the freeway. It's a fairly narrow pathway. It's specifically for stormwater drainage. However, wildlife do use this. It's approximately 12 feet wide. It is, in fact, a choke point for east-west movements beyond the freeway, so you are correct.
Okay. And then, could you talk a little bit about the wildlife movement? You've observed it now for weeks, or months, or years. Where is it with the four parcels? Where is most of the wildlife movement?
Well, most of the biologists that have looked at this, and several have actually done fieldwork out here, including myself, there is information in the environmental impact report. When Glenn Lukos initially looked at the site, they had biologists that made a number of site visits. And there are photos of wildlife movement and game trails on the site. Most of the movement is occurring lower in the site. It's occurring in property that was obtained and purchased by the city and is now permanent open space. When you're standing on the approximate pad for lot four, you can look down slope and actually see the game trails crossing the property in an east-west direction. This is not to say that there isn't wildlife movement across the entire 25-acre parcel, but most of it is concentrated lower in the site.
So it's on the city-purchased lots, not on this lot necessarily?
It's well within the conservation easement, and it's well within the area that was acquired by the city as permanent open space.
Okay. And I look at this house, and I say it's extraordinarily large. Can you explain how the grading would be affected if the size of the house is less?
Well, when we looked at... This issue was actually brought up in the response to comments on the EIR, and we went back to look to see what would happen if the developed pad area was significantly reduced in size by about 50%. When we did that, we went back and we looked at the computer-generated slope maps of the property, and on lot number four, the original site design, there was about, I believe, 0.24 acres of encroachment in the 25% terrain. Now, as a result of this one-lot alternative, there's about a third of an acre, a little over 0.31 acres of encroachment in the 25% slope. Because that particular lot has a fairly level pad area already, it's not very large, but it is... The placement of the building incorporates this flatter area. When you divide the property in half, or reduce its size by about 50%, you do not get a proportional reduction in encroachment in the 25% terrain. Actually, it's a relatively small decrease in encroachment. You actually go from about 0.13 acres, about a third of an acre, back down to about a quarter of an acre. There's a change in encroachment of about .07. It's just... How can I explain this? It's about a tenth of an acre difference if you divide the property in half. Because of the location of the existing pad there, you only reduce the grading between a tenth to possibly two tenths of an acre by reducing the size of the pad by 50%. So, there are other issues related to that. When we looked at the analysis of what the overall impacts were, we were looking at impacts to vegetation, whether or not there would be any change in terms of the ridgeline silhouetting as a result of a different-sized house being placed on that parcel. We looked at brush clearance, and there simply isn't a lot of change, or significant change, in the overall level of grading in 25% slope, and there's not a significant reduction in any of the other environmental effects. If there were, we would be identifying that as a feasible alternative to further reduce the environmental effects of this project, and that simply wasn't the case.
When I was out at the property, I know you're comparing the size to the two Thousand Oaks properties, but this property completely overlooks the Santa Rosa Valley. It's completely invisible, or not visible to Thousand Oaks. It's only visible to Santa Rosa residents. So, how is it comparable to some of the homes that are on the Santa Rosa side?
Actually, I think Mr. Winkie is the development planner, the project planner. He should probably respond to that question.
The livable areas of the homestead hidden metals, they range from the mid 4,000, around 4,400, 4,500 square feet to upwards. I believe there's some that are close to 9,000 or 10,000 square feet. And then there are some homes kind of directly below, down the hillside below this house that are comparable in size to this one here.
All right. Thank you. That's all for now.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Fox?
Thanks. I'm not quite sure who's going to handle these, but I just want to... You guys covered a lot of ground. I just kind of want to hit some of the high points, make sure we got the information. First, this is private property, not open space. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Privately-owned property. And the three parcels that the city purchased, those were private property as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And now that the city has purchased them, I don't think they've gone through COSCA yet, but ultimately, they're going to be placed in our open space inventory and actually be designated as open space, publicly owned. Is that correct?
Yes, they are already publicly owned open space, but they will be transferred to COSCA.
Okay, good. Now, the parcel that we're dealing with, that's property that's currently zoned for a single-family dwelling. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the zoning is consistent?
That's correct.
With the application? The project and the one house that we're talking about is not located on the ridgeline?
Correct.
And as I read the staff report, we're talking it's 69, 70 feet below the ridgeline?
I believe that's the peak of the roof, is that elevation below the crest of the ridgeline.
Okay. And as a part of this proposal, as I understand it, this proposal includes a four-acre conservation easement that, in addition to the three parcels that we purchased, that will be added to the open space inventory as well. Is that correct?
I'm going to ask Mr. Town to answer that.
Is that separate and apart, Mark, or is that part of?
Well, it would be an area that would be protected as natural open space. It would still be privately owned, but it would be protected.
All right. We've heard a lot about the wildlife corridor. I think it's important to point out, that's precisely why the council spent, what was it, $2.5, $2.47 million to protect the wildlife corridor. Your money. That's what the council spent, months and months and months of negotiation, to purchase three properties for the express purpose of protecting the wildlife corridor. And in doing so, as I understand it, now with this one house, as it's been cited and proposed, and with all the restrictions we've placed on it, the wildlife corridor at its narrowest point is 600 feet. Is that correct? Now, as far as the actual developed and graded parcel, as I understand it, if you look at the parcel and you look at it in terms of 100%, 86% of the parcel will remain in an ungraded capacity. Is that correct? Not graded at all? We're not going to touch 86% of the site?
That's right.
Okay. So, product of both public and parochial schools, that leaves about 14% here, okay? That will actually be graded, because there's been some question about the degree and the severity of the grading, but of the site, 14% will be graded, 86% will be untouched. Is that right?
That 14% is a combination of graded pad area and brush clearance area.
Oh, okay. So not even that will be graded. Some of it will be brush clearance. You know, when I first looked through the staff report, the size of the home was... It seemed like a large home, and it is a large home. But I think, as you guys talked about, the comparable homes directly on that private road, the homes located... Most folks in the community don't know where this house is. It's on the other side of the ridgeline above Cal Lutheran. You can't see this parcel from Thousand Oaks. You physically can't see it. You have to drive up a road, go over a road, and look down on this hillside. So, if you're in Thousand Oaks, you're not going to see this house unless you go up this road. The other homes that are there, they're about 6,000 square feet. Is that correct? The two houses next to that?
That's correct, including their garages.
Now, this single-family home, it complies with the precise plan, the design, and all the requirements, and all the city's policies? No waivers, no variances, none of that? Okay. Now, I don't know who would be the appropriate person here. I want to talk a little bit about the funding, because this didn't happen by magic. I don't know if Mr. Mitnick... Mr. Mitnick and maybe Ms. Albano. We purchased this property through negotiations for about $2.5 million. Where did that money come from?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the actual purchase price was $2,485,000. There were four sources. The first and largest source was the city's open space endowment fund, at $1,885,000. The second source was a Prop 50 grant from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy for $500,000. The third source was the Canale Open Space Conservation Agency, often referred to as COSCA. That was $100,000. And the fourth was a private donation of $100. So those are the four sources.
So the bulk of the dollars came from the open space endowment fund. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And where does that money come from?
Okay. There are a number of sources for the city's open space endowment fund. The balance was close to $3 million prior to this open space acquisition, and so it did deplete a significant amount. But the sources are as follows. We have what's called a bedroom tax, so when new development takes place, a certain amount per bedroom is placed into the open space fund. The second source is every year, we look at the general fund balance. This was council action taken in either the late '90s or near 2000. We look to see what the surplus is in the general fund, the net surplus, and whatever's left that's put in the open space fund. It's running about $100,000 a year. Another source is the Adoptin' Oak Program that was put into place in around the year 2000 or 2001. A little bit of money flows into that, or flows from that. The next source is a non-resident golf fee. Right now, the current rate is $2. So when non-residents go and they play at the Los Rovels Golf Course, a publicly-owned, the city's own golf course, they pay $2. Residents don't have to pay that fee, and that was put into place in the late '90s. Another source is $1 million came from G.I. Rubbish in negotiations with them for their franchise agreement. $1 million was put in the open space fund. The last source, then, is a recurring source, and that's interest earnings on the balance. And the balance right now is approaching $1 million, approximately $1 million. So the interest earnings has dropped significantly as a result. So I hope that answers the question.
Yeah. And I just want to clarify this a little bit. The negotiations with G.I. Rubbish, when did that occur? I did them. I just want to remember.
Late '90s. Yeah, late '90s. So the open space fund, most of the sources were derived in the late '90s and early 2000.
Okay. And so the big-ticket items on this open space endowment were the negotiations with G.I. Rubbish. That was kind of the... That was kind of the, the main principle that started with a million dollars. The general fund reserve percentage that the city looks at every year, I believe we put that into 1998, if I'm not mistaken, maybe 97?
Approximately in the late, late 90s.
Yeah. We can figure it out, because it's about 100,000 every year.
That's correct.
Okay. And then the $2 golf fees, if, that was an issue I brought to council when we were talking about the golf course, and one of the calculations that we did was about 60,000 rounds. If you look at about 100,000 per year at the Los Robles, a lot of folks may not realize, about 60% of those are from out-of-town residents. And so what we thought at the time was, is kind of, membership has its privileges. We, we look at open space. So we looked at increasing $2 per round for non-residents, and then take the money and put in the open space account. And that accounts for about 120,000 a year. And we were, we did that back in the late 90s as well. Is that correct? Or, or even before that?
Late 90s. And it might have been a dollar initially, then it was increased to two.
Okay. All right. So these, the monies that we spent, at least from the Thousand Oaks, were monies that were specifically earmarked through programs that were initiated by the council in the late 90s. And those monies are what we used, at least in, in, from the Thousand Oaks standpoint, for the purchase of these properties. Is that correct?
That's correct. And if I may add, if the intent of council was to put as much as you can into the fund, build the corpus, so over time you'd have more interest earnings, which then would allow for even more open space acquisitions.
But in this particular case, we spent 2.475, 2.8 million of the 3 million for purchases of, for purchase of three parcels.
For clarification purposes, 1.8, 1,885,000
Right.
Was appropriated out of this fund.
Right. That's right. Thanks, Dan, for correcting.
Okay.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And I was going to clarify this earlier, but the, the city's Park Completion Open Space Endowment Acquisition Fund, I wrote that when I was on the board of the Canale Recreation Park District and brought it with me in 1998 when I came to the council. And the council adopted it as policy in 1999, just after the start of the year. That was the beginning. And the concept was to build it up to a substantial sum so that the corpus would remain whole, and the proceeds from the corpus could be used to finish off some of the 13 unfinished park sites to assist the Recreation and Park District, and also when there were opportunities for open space, open space acquisitions, that we would have some money. The fund, while it was growing, this opportunity came along before the fund reached the point that we had hoped it would. And so the council decided to utilize these funds because of this critically important acquisition, which I, as I mentioned, I brought this issue on the Wildlife Corridor to the council two years ago, when Jim Friedel and I went up and saw what was happening up there. So that's the history. Thank you. Additional questions, the staff? Okay. Mrs. Bill Daleopinian, if I could for just a minute, I have a procedural issue that I'm going to have to address with the city attorney. One of the speakers under public comments raised the issue of a council member declaring their opposition and disagreement to the action of the planning commission, which approved this project. And this was done in a public forum, I believe it was the day after the commission had made its decision. Does that have any impact on participation of any member of the council at this time?
My understanding is that the statements were made during a, excuse me, a candidate forum. And in that case, candidates are given much more leeway in terms of being able to express their opinions on important issues facing the city, because they are running and they are seeking support and have the right to speak to their constituents. Also, at that time, given the timing, you told me there was no appeal pending in the, in this matter. So normally, a pre-hearing expression by a candidate voicing an opinion on a project would not be enough in and of itself to lead one to believe that there's actual bias or a high probability of bias. A council member, or in this case, a council member would have the right to explain that they have, although they have strong opinions on the project, that they are willing and able to listen in an open forum to the record and make a decision based on the record in front of them this evening. So there is no automatic disqualification of someone in these kind of cases. Bias can't be implied. It has to be actual. And normally, the appellant or applicant would raise that issue to the body itself, if they believed that there was such bias and that we'd have to review that at that time.
Okay. Thank you. I understand. Mrs. Bill Daleopinian.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. I would also like to find out when I allegedly made this statement. Perhaps there's a recording, so I can review and refresh my memory, since I do not recall. We can, we can certainly deal with that at a later time, but I'd like, just for my own edification, to find out when I allegedly made this statement.
I have a question regarding the history, why we are here tonight, in terms of this particular project. If it complies with everything, our codes, guidelines, general plan, why was it hurt by the planning commission?
I think the code requires, and maybe we can check this if we've got a copy up here, gives the, only the commission the authority to grant HPD permits in the hillside plan development zone. If not, there is, was judgment that needed to be exercised in terms of whether or not the amount of grading was the minimum necessary to develop the property, which is the standard in the HPD zone. Also, whenever, even if staff does have the authority to approve projects, which I don't believe we did have the authority in this case, it did start out as a, as four separate lots. Some of the other lots, the development that was proposed on those lots was, clearly did not meet the standards, or we would not be in a position as staff to approve them. And therefore, the four-lot project was on a path to go to the planning commission, and it would have been, I think, fairly awkward for the city to all of a sudden decide, well, no, it's not going to the planning commission.
If I could add to that, section 9-4.3111 requires any HPD permit to go to the planning commission for decision.
And the reason being, why does it need permission from the planning commission?
That's what your code says. The code requires that these projects in the HPD zone be decided by the planning commission.
So it is, the planning commission has discretion as to whether to approve a permit or not?
Yes.
And the same with the city council?
Yes.
So staff is uncomfortable, of course. It seems, dealing with such an issue, HPD, and therefore, is not doing anything administratively, and is being brought before the planning commission, and now tonight, it's on appeal.
I can't comment on any uncomfortableness by the staff. I'm just telling you what your codes require is that whether it was prompted by staff requesting the planning commission to approve it, or city council to approve it, or it was something that was initiated by the city council to look over these types of projects. So I can't comment on what the intent was behind that. It was adopted in 1971, and perhaps Mr. Prescott can help.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think that that was the first reason that I suggested and actually asked if somebody could look at the code, which the assistant city attorney did. So the, the answer to your question is the municipal code requires HPD permits to go to the planning commission, does not give the, the staff the authority to approve or deny them. And that's why it went to the planning commission.
In other words, there isn't necessarily an automatic approval, and that is why we would like to have another body review the application before rendering a final decision?
Well, even, even for, even for items that can be approved by staff, they are also discretionary. So it's, it's a matter that it's a discretionary application, and for this particular kind of application, the code says, well, the planning commission should be the decision-making body. There's others, as you may recall, a number of years ago, the city adopted the mansionization ordinance, and there was a certain class of room additions to existing single-family homes, where the decision-making authority was delegated to the planning commission versus staff.
Thank you. And when, in the late 80s, I believe, a study was done to see which properties should be included in the Protected Ridge Line Ordinance, why wasn't that area of Mount Clef included in this particular protected overlay zone?
The subject property was not included in that zone because it's not on the ridgeline. It's on the, it's on the downslope on the Santa Rosa Valley side of the ridgeline.
I think that there are some people who may disagree with that. I was speaking about the entire area there. There are some homes already on the other side of Mount Clef facing Thousand Oaks, and I was just wondering why that particular area was not included in the Protected Ridge Line Ordinance.
Well, if you're referring to the tract immediately along Byer Bluff Court, the, I think it's a Ridgewood tract, that is also below the crest of the ridgeline. Some of the properties that the city actually acquired as open space earlier, from the University of California owned a property, the Callis property, some of you will remember that, that actually were on the ridgeline, did have the Protected Ridge Line Overlay Zone placed on them in the, I believe, the early 90s or so.
In visiting the property, there are two homes already there, in between the two, in this saddleback sort of area, which is part of the ridgeline. Those homes are fairly new, and that is an area that was not included as part of the Protected Ridge Line Ordinance. And that, I believe, one of the homes is, well, that's perhaps not part of the testimony tonight about some of the conditions not having been met.
Well, we'd have to research that property. I know that there was a consideration for Protected Ridge Line zoning along the Mount Clef Ridge. It was part of the property. As to why it was not imposed on.
Mr. Prescott, I apologize for interrupting, but the relevance of what happened 20 years ago, as far as the zoning or the ridgeline protective overlay on that ridgeline, really isn't relevant to this discussion. If we want a clarification from the city attorney, we can probably get that. Mrs. Albano?
The reason that we're saying that is, what's in front of the council tonight is whether this project meets the requirements of what it's zoned, and the general plan, and all the other things we've talked about. The discussion really isn't whether it should have, or maybe could have been included in the Protected Ridge Line Ordinance. It's not. That's not the ordinance that is applicable tonight. The ordinance that's applicable is the HPD ordinance, and that's the one we were talking about. That's why I asked the mayor to bring the conversation back to the relevant ordinances that have to do with governs this project right here and now, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just trying to gain a broader understanding as to why we're dealing with this tonight. And it helps to have a little bit more background information. In the staff report, it says, and also according to the HPD ordinance, that 100% of the site should be preserved, preserved as natural open space and remain in the natural state, with the exception of the building pad and the driveway. In one staff report, it says that we are preserving 86% of the area in natural terrain, yet 4%, or I should say, four acres, which are going to be dedicated or being kept as open space, does not amount to 86% of the entire property. In fact, it is less than, it's about 60% or so. Can you, can someone elaborate on the perceived discrepancy there?
Sure. The conservation easement would encompass about 59% of the subject lot. The ungraded area is the area that is 86%, and that's the sum of the area that is being protected as a conservation easement, and then excluding the other areas that are being brush cleared and would be graded.
And I think there's also some area that is not being graded, that's part of the, that's not part of the conservation easement, just because it didn't, it would be little slivers of land up above the, up above the house site, that it didn't make sense to have the conservation easement over that area.
But the HPD ordinance says that 100% should remain, with the exception of building pad and driveway.
But separate from the conservation easement, there are, are conditions on the project as approved by the planning commission, that'll limit the grading that's allowable on the property to the grading that's shown on the grading plan, that's the approved exhibit. So they would not be able to grade beyond that, whether or not there was a conservation easement, or, or wasn't a conservation easement, without coming back to the city, and in this case, the planning commission for modification.
Would it then be more accurate to say that it's actually 60% that is being completely preserved as part of supporting the, the Wildlife Corridor?
Well, I think we've just, just given the percentage that would not be graded, which is relevant to the HPD ordinance, and the area of the conservation easement, which is, you know, it's a separate protection over that part of the property.
The general plan designates this as undevelopable. Measure E states that, Measure E, according to my recollection, also inventories, the commercial versus residential acreage in Thousand Oaks. The property is zoned HPD. The general plan says it's undevelopable. There seems to be a conflict in allowing residential development. Does it not in change, in fact, change then the, the acreage in Thousand Oaks under Measure E? The general plan was adopted in the 90s?
No, because there is no general plan amendment involved. Measure E applies to general plan amendments. What we have here, you have a general plan designation, and then you have the zoning, the HPD zoning, which is consistent with that general plan designation. So there is no general plan change involved, and in fact, no zone change involved.
How many inconsistencies do we have with our general plan in areas where it says it's undevelopable because it is very challenging habitat versus the area actually being zoned differently?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the first part of that question.
How many inconsistencies exist in the city with the general plan, where the general plan, for example, designates something as undevelopable, yet the property is zoned differently and is allowed to, to build upon?
Well, we don't, we don't consider those inconsistencies. Where you have properties where the entire property is within the, is, all of the land within the property is within the undevelopable designation of the general plan, the city cannot zone the property so that it is not developable at all. That's my understanding against the law. What we have used is the HPD zone, because the, and determine that to be consistent with the undevelopable designation. And the reason for that is that the properties that are designated undevelopable by the general plan are, are that way because of their steep slopes. The HPD ordinance is specifically tailored to those kinds of properties and limits the development in proportion to the average slope, with the, with a minimum of at least one, one home on a recorded lot. Where you have a property where a portion of it's designated undevelopable, the steeper part, and another portion has a different residential designation on it that is perhaps flatter land, and looking at a development proposal for that property, we will make sure that the development is clustered on the flat part, and then the steep part, which is designated undevelopable, can remain that way.
How many cases of a general plan designation being different from the actual zoning do we have in Thousand Oaks?
Well, that's not really a valid comparison. The zoning and general plan are two different things, and it's a question of whether a particular zoning is consistent with a particular general plan designation. But we do have other areas in town where you have a property which is completely undevelopable per the general plan, and there is a house on that property. There are properties in the Kelly Estates area, there's property at the, there's a house. There are properties in the Kelly Estates area, there's property at the, there's a house at the, what would be the northeast corner of Sunset Hills Boulevard and Olson Road. But that was an existing recorded lot, and even though the general plan said undevelopable, it had a zoning on it that allowed one house.
So we may actually see then a little bit more development than the actual general plan may give us the impression?
When we, when we, for planning, long-range planning purposes and, and for providing projections that are necessary to plan the infrastructure for the Cano Valley, we look at the, the zoning of property, and we look at the general plan designations, and in all cases, if there is an existing recorded lot, no matter what the underlying general plan designation might be, we would allocate it one home. So we're not, we're not, there aren't any surprises out there, I guess is what I'm trying to say, in terms of the number of dwelling units that we would expect to be built in the future.
And just to reiterate, this home would be the largest home in the area with 7,700 square feet?
Within the city, the land in the Santa Rosa Valley, a make-out lay to the north, is in the county, and some of the homes, as Mr. Ranky testified, in that area, reached nine to 10,000 square feet in size.
Thank you.
In response, you had a question earlier when we had asked about the, under public comments about the speaker attributing certain comments to a council member of opposition and disagreement to this project in public through your, to answer your question. It was Friday, October 20th, 2006, at 9:45 in the morning at Century 21 Rolling Oaks Real Estate, when there were 50 people present, realtors and guests. If that'll help you answer your question. Are there any further questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that you're keeping track of my comments.
No comments? And questions of staff? Okay, we have a series of speakers on this item. The first cars will be the appellant. The appellant has 15 minutes and has requested that two people speak during that 15-minute period. Do I have that correct? Okay. The first speaker, Mr. Mark Burley. Mr. Burley. And the second, excuse me, the second speaker will be Frank Angel. Thank you. Mr. Burley.
Good evening. My name is Mark Burley. I'm co-chair of Save Our Ring of Green. I live in the Santa Rosa Valley. We're here today to appeal the decision by the Planning Commission to approve the building of a house on the Mount Clef Ridge that does not comply with the city ordinances. This lot comes under the requirements of the Hillside Plan Development Ordinance. This ordinance requires no grading on slopes over 25%, and no building on property with an average slope of 35% or more. The ordinance also provides for a maximum number of dwelling units per gross acre, and this project exceeds all those criteria and in fact requires waivers in all three of those areas. City has a problem here, that it regards this as a legal lot, and the HPD ordinance provides for an exception for lots that are otherwise legally undevelopable, such as this one. And that exception specifically allows only the minimum amount of development. Allowing the minimum amount of development is not a violation of an owner's property rights. The developer purchased these lots knowing full well, or this lot, knowing that this, the city's restrictions that were placed on the lot. The building that was approved by the Planning Commission is a 7,700-square-foot building that includes a garage for a recreational vehicle. It's by far the largest house in this section of Thousand Oaks. By no stretch of the imagination can this be described as a minimum development, and no court of law would ever come to the conclusion that this is a minimum development for this property. We all know by now that this is a significant wildlife corridor. A major new study named "South Coast Missing Linkages" was published in June of this year in partnership with the National Park Service, the U.S. Forest Service, California National Parks, and 17 other conservation groups. They recommended a minimum width for the Mount Clef Ridge Wildlife Corridor of 2 kilometers, or about 1.2 miles. Mount Clef has already been reduced to only 800 feet, even without another building being put up there. And Ray Savage of the National Park Service has recently said that the Mount Clef Ridge Wildlife Corridor already presents a challenge in terms of being a habitat linkage because it's constrained by existing development. He added that any other further losses of habitat have the potential to be significant, and that width estimate in the report is designed to buffer against possible edge effects. The city's general plan requires that in this case, the land use must minimize any potential adverse impacts to the movement corridor. And community development staff have testified both to the Planning Commission and to you tonight, that in fact, a smaller house would widen the habitat linkage. And that's even without considering an alternate, alternate positioning of a smaller house. In fact, no alternate designs for the building or the placement of a smaller house on the lot were presented to the Planning Commission. As the city is required by law to approve only the minimum development, the builder must be asked to present alternate designs that conform to this requirement. Additionally, no attempt has been made by the developer to solicit neighborhood feedback for this house. At the Planning Commission, not a single neighbor testified in support of this project, and there were plenty from both Thousand Oaks and the Santa Rosa Valley objecting. Your packages include a number of written responses to the Planning Commission that opposes development. Traditionally, the city has required area residents to have some say in the building proposed for their neighborhood. The previous house that Mr. Dubin built on the Mount Clef Ridge at least had some view shared mitigation conditions for people in the Santa Rosa Valley. Now, Mr. Dubin testified that his goal was to build this house for his family to live in, when he spoke at the Flaming, uh, Planning Commission. Now, that's an emotionally charged reason that's sure to elicit sympathy from everybody. However, Mr. Dubin is well-known in the Santa Rosa Valley as a developer and speculator in high-end luxury houses. At least twice before, he's used this emotional appeal while applying to build houses, only to sell the property within a short time. He used this line actually in Hidden Meadows, trying to get, well, extract waivers for architectural guidelines, then he sold the house. So why is this proposed building so large that it's described, being described as looking like a hotel? You've all seen the pictures tonight. It's a difficult and expensive area to build, and it's simply not worth building a smaller house. The dilemma here is that a larger house maximizes profitability, but it's not allowed by city ordinance that requires the development to be minimal. The developer knew this when he bought the lot, but now he wants to change the rules. And we're not suggesting that Mr. Dubin's company, SD Development, doesn't make a profit from this. In fact, just the opposite. When I met with him in 2004, I made it clear we would do everything we could to help him make money from these profits, everything that did not include developing them. We support his right to make money from his investment, and we want to see it make as good business sense for him to sell this lot for preservation as open space as it does to develop it. All four of the Mount Clef lots were purchased in 2001 for a total of $725,000. Thanks to a little lobbying from us and a very bold decision by the city council for funding, and from, and from other agency, Mr. Dubin and his investors sold three of the four lots to Thousand Oaks this year. So far, they've made a gross profit of $1.75 million. We hope that this 240% profit will be considerably increased by the sale of the remaining lot that we're discussing today, when it's sold as open space. I have no doubt that Mr. Dubin would have sold all of these lots to the city earlier this year, if the offer had been made. All four of these lots were designated by COSCA as the highest priority property for acquisition in the Canejo Valley. Not just three. When they contributed to the purchase of these three lots, board members of both COSCA and the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy questioned why the city did not purchase all four lots at that time. And so we're here today. Save Our Ring of Green has now partnered with Save Open Space, who as you know, are the principals in getting the Arnes and Ranch protected as natural open space, and the Mountains Restoration Trust, who negotiated the purchase of the King Gillette Ranch. We have managed to secure commitments for private funding to use as a down payment or option, option to purchase these, purchase these lots. We've offered to negotiate with Mr. Dubin's attorneys, and once this deal is in place, we intend to apply, to apply to the Wildlife Conservation Board, hopefully with the city of Thousand Oaks as the lead agency, should this council decide that course of action. We have received commitments of written support for this application from the following people and organization. U.S. Congressman Brad Sherman, State Senator Sheila Kuehl, State Assembly Member Fran Pavly, Ventura County Supervisors Steve Bennett and Linda Parks, the Mountain Lion Foundation, the South Coast Wildlands, the Sierra Club of Canejo, the Sierra Club of Angeles Chapter, and so on, and so on, and so on. Additionally, we seek, and we intend to seek other public and private funding to finance these purchases, this purchase. Finally, I'd like to consider what the city staff would be recommending tonight, had this council not agreed to purchase lots 1 through 4. They would be recommending building on all four lots. There'd be 140 pages of staff reports recommending four buildings in the wildlife corridor. Exactly the same arguments and analyses that they're using for this single lot would be used for all four of the lots. Now, their job doesn't include being asked to look at the big picture. They have a defined set of parameters, and that's where we rely on the good judgment of the city council. We need you to have a larger vision. The issue before you tonight, it's not just an issue for Thousand Oaks, it's a regional issue. And as you can see from the support we've gathered, you've already made a bold choice to spend a significant amount of city money to save this habitat linkage. Please don't dissipate that investment. Now is your opportunity to join us and our supporters and take the final step to protect this jewel in the crown that is the Ring of Green around the city of Thousand Oaks. Make a decision to protect Mount Clef for the ages. We're asking you tonight to comply with city ordinances and uphold our appeal to the, of the Planning Commission's decision. Send the developer back to the drawing board for a redesign that can truly pass the test of the minimum development for this lot, as required by the law. Meanwhile, let's all work together to find a way to save this lot as permanent open space. And let's make that a solution that works as well for us as it does for Mr. Dubin. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you. Mr. Angel, Mr. Angel, you have six minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Please set the clock.
Honorable council members, my name is Frank Angel, and I represent, I'm legal counsel for Save Our Ring of Green. Following staff direction that speakers first introduced their materials, I have several materials that I want to include in the record if time runs out. First of all, the three-page city council appeal notes that we have prepared at my office, just in case time runs out. Then, a very important study called "South Coast Missing Linkages Project," which we'd like to have included in the administrative record of the proceedings in this case. It was referenced previously in emails, staff had the link, but if a record has to be prepared as a result of this proceeding, we want to facilitate that and produce that document in hard copy. And then also, I've sent an email to Mr. Prescott today about a very substantial issue that we have found no trace in the EIR, but you found traces about something else in killed mountain lions, and that is the issue of the rodenticides being used in the Santa Monica Mountains that have been responsible for the loss of two, of the six remaining mountain lions in the Seany Hills and the Santa Monica Mountains. That's a very severe issue, all the more severe in this particular case, because we're dealing with the only western wildlife habitat linkage on both sides, between the open spaces on both sides of the, of the major tree ways where Mount Clef is located. And so I emailed a link to an EPA document, or the EPA document. I also want to produce an Acorn article about this very significant issue that, where the EIR concludes that environmental impacts on biological resources have been reduced to a level of insignificance, yet this very important issue has been completely ignored. So I'd like to focus on two issues. There's the land use issue, and then there's an EIR issue. The land use issue can be summarized and rebutted by focusing on page three at the staff report. The first, the second full paragraph tells you this. The land use element of the city's general plan designates the property as undevelopable because it is located in steep hillsides resulting in an inconsistency, in an apparent inconsistency between the project and the land use element. Well, that is an inconsistency, and obviously, as you've heard many, many times in your careers, the land use plan, the general plan is the constitution. It takes precedence over conflicting provisions in your ordinance. And if the land use map says it's undevelopable, it is undevelopable. Whether that results in a taking or not, as the California Supreme Court has made very clear only last year in a major published opinion, is a matter for the courts to decide. That is not a matter for the council to decide. It is up to the council and the city's decision-makers to uphold their laws, which are the general plan, which is the constitution. Now, staff goes on to say, now, let's, let's assume now the general plan doesn't exist, and the general plan doesn't, says it's developable when it says it's undevelop, undevelopable. It then goes on to say that because the proposed project consists of a legally recorded lot, and because construction of a single-family home on the lot isn't allowed use within the HPD zone, there is no inconsistency. Well, then, two main problems with this are this. This is not a legally recorded lot by September 9, 1971. This is a legally recorded lot that was created by a land division in 1974, and therefore, under your very hillside plant development ordinance, you don't have the minimum one single-family unit requirement that otherwise would apply for people who didn't know when they purchased the lot, what the provisions and the restrictions of the hillside management ordinance were. So that's a very important issue, and by the way, the EIR completely misrepresents that and skirts it. And that's a, an inadequacy in its disclosure on the land use consistency issues in the general plan. Secondly, in the EIR, secondly, the staff says, construction of a single-family home is, is then allowed because it was a legally recorded lot, but again, the legally recorded lot was in '74, after the HPD zone went into effect. And when you, when you take that in consideration, then you have to apply the provisions of that zone. And in this case, we have a lot that is entirely in the 35% plus hillside category. And in that case, you get .1 unit. So the applicant needs 10 acres for one lot, for one house, excuse me. And the applicant also would be bound by the 100% open space requirement, if you look at your ordinance. The minimum required natural open space under your ordinance, when you are in a hillside category of 35% or more, is 100%.
Your time is up, Mr. Angel. You've exceeded your time.
I'll reserve the rest, and we have five minutes rebuttal, right?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will now hear from the applicant. Representing the applicant is Mr. Chuck Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Chuck Cohen, Weston Benjew, representing Mr. and Mrs. Dubin. As you, as you know, they're the owners of the last remaining of the, of the four recorded lots. And with all due respect to Mr. Angel, I don't believe that his points, and I think that your city attorney will respond far more effectively than I to the point that he was raising as, as to the dating of the recording of the lots, vis-à-vis the date of the general plan as well, the effective date of the general plan as well as the HPD ordinance. To be-- To be very, very brief, your staff has put this project through all the hoops. It has been in process for, I believe, well over two years now. It obviously started off with, with the four lots. That was interrupted when your council decided that the preferable thing to do would be to make an offer, and an offer from the council to acquire what was originally expected to be two lots turned out to be three, all of which were to the disappointment of the property owners. Nonetheless, under the circumstances, your request was treated as a command, and therefore, the sale took place. With all of the overview, all of the scrutiny and development evaluation that has been applied by staff, there's really little for the Dubins, Mr. Ortman, the civil engineer, or Mr. Whitting, the project architect, who are all here this evening, to say with respect to this issue. I frankly have not heard anything in the record this evening. And I haven't read some of the material, of course, that was submitted from the dais here a few moments ago. But I, we, I, I know staff was, was aware of the linkage article, et cetera. So, I've heard nothing that would tend to invalidate any of the staff evaluations or recommendations. And with that, unless you have questions of me, we ask that you deny the appeal and respond to the approval by the Planning Commission with the, further carrying forward of that message by your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Mrs. Belairopiny.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Cohen.
Good evening.
Does your client consider 7,700 square-foot building, home, a reasonable use?
Well, to be very direct, yes. The, first of all, the house is about 6,000 square feet. The two houses closest to it are variously 5,200 and 5,500 square feet. So, we're not talking about any major differences in the two houses that are, that are to the south in the city of Thousand Oaks. But you, you will recall, I, I trust, that we submitted a letter of November 21st with a, an attachment which included 3, 6, 9, 12, 13 homes on Andalusia Drive, Alhambra Court, Old Butterfield, and Alicante Court, which variously ranged from a low of 5,780 square feet to a high of 10,630 square feet. So, this house does in fact fall well within those limits. And by the way, each of those homes included, I think there was one that we weren't sure of. That was at 13266 Andalusia, which was a 7,200 square-foot house. But all the others, we know, ran from four to eight-car garages. So, this is very consistent with the neighborhood in which it lies. And of course, we would not want to build a, a home on this ridge that would tend to be a detriment or influence, a depreciation of the property values of those who already exist and, and live nearby between this home and Santa Rosa Road. So, those are all quite, quite appropriate considerations.
Any additional questions, Mr. Cohen? We have available for questions Michael Dubin, Joe Power, and Dan Whitting. Keep those cards aside. Our next speaker is Sheri Suwinski, followed by David Suwinski. City Clerk, Speaker, a lot of time.
Three minutes each.
Three minutes each.
I have two documents to present to city council. Sheri Suwinski, co-chair, Save Our Ring of Green, and resident of Thousand Oaks. We appreciate the opportunity tonight to explain the other side of this case. What is clear tonight is that the project site exists in a threatened critical area that links two major mountain ranges and several local habitats. Not one person to report ever, ever has disputed that. What also is undisputed is the city of Thousand Oaks is solely responsible for the survival of this critical linkage. So, why are we here? We are here to dispute the inconsistencies in the form of subjective definitions and interpretations that are not reasonable nor understandable. For instance, staff has reported that the EIR conclusions apply to one home as well as four homes. So, they testified that one home will unavoidably negatively impact the wildlife pathway. But staff also feels this case is consistent with conservation policies, stating we must do everything to avoid negative impacts. This doesn't make sense. And why is it that the applicant with a 1974 legally-recorded lot getting the benefit of legally-recorded lots prior to September 9, 1971, which allows one single-family dwelling beyond the density restrictions of the HPD zone? This is not fair. When staff compares the one-home alternative to the four-home sequoia case project, it is similar to a surgeon saying, after his patient has died on the table, "I only nicked his pulmonary artery. I didn't cut it in half." Both result in a high risk of death. This is what is happening to this critical pathway, and several professional reports presented to you back this up outside the EIR. The EIR is indeed inadequate. Also, the city has placed a lot of weight on the Santa Monica Mountains and the Department of Fish and Game response letters. In an email in February 2004, the Department Fish and Game rep writes to the Deputy Director of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, quote, "Just so you know, Paul, on this project, Greg Smith, city staff, says he can't understand why you guys would be happy with the conservation easement, and that will satisfy wildlife pastors' issues, and that we, Department Fish and Game, think there is a problem." Apparently, a disagreement between experts, is what Smith is calling it. "I saw your letter, and I don't think that is what your letter says." End quote. The public review of the final EIR has eight missing data pages and Appendix D regarding groundwater and grading. And why isn't there a conclusion or response to the debate between two consultants disagreeing with the grading, the percolation tests, which now have expired, the geological structures, and groundwater impacts? The EIR is indeed inadequate. This project approval is not reasonable nor fair. Let's err on the side of caution and take this back to a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you. David Suwinski? Oh, well, thank you. We'll pass. Jim Yarborough, Mr. Yarborough?
Jim Yarborough, Newbury Park. No luxury home should be built in this area. It violates the general plan. It seems entirely possible to give this property owner a profit on his property and investment, and to still preserve this as open space and as wildlife corridor. And I recommend that it be preserved as open space and a wildlife corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria Hutz, followed by Clint Mikkowski. Oh, it's Clint Mikkovich. First one up. Gloria Hutz.
Hi, I'm Gloria Hutz in Westlake Village. And I find, I, the wildlife preserve is very important to me and to our future. If we, the size of the house needs to be reduced. In fact, I agree with the gentleman that just spoke. I'd like to take this property back. Six-foot, 600 feet is not adequate to wildlife. We have taken their land away. Are we going to continue to take it, more of it? It says here, 7,700 square-foot house and a garage. My home in Westlake Village is 1,700 square feet. That's the size of this gentleman's garage. And we don't want mansions here. I moved from Beverly Hills to get away from that. And I was always told that this was a open space, slow growth, pristine. And if this house gets built with these proportions, it's going to ruin other people. They will come here and think, "Oh, I'll some way, somehow get around this." And I just feel that developers and the city council should not be accepting money from developers because it does require payback and conflict of interest. And let's keep the animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Clint Mikkovich, followed by Carolyn Guillet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the new last name, but I think I'll keep my original one.
I apologize, Clint.
It's okay. I understand. Ladies and gentlemen, city staff, I'm a 25-year resident of this city, so I'd like to talk a little bit about my childhood here. I grew up in Wildwood. I still live there. I went to Wildwood Elementary in, in fifth grade and sixth grade, and as they do today, CRPD brings native animals to assemblies. And the message is that our local wildlife and land is special, and it needs to be protected. And I really don't care what any side anybody's on. I think we all can find that common ground and come to an agreement there. This issue is, has for the last two years, and I have to object to the prior comments that the ridgeline issue wasn't, doesn't matter tonight because if it, if this land was protected under the ridgeline ordinance, I wouldn't have spent the last two years of my life fighting this issue. So, it is relevant to me. I believe this, this issue sets our city back. Every, every election, every candidate has spoken about protecting wildlife, and we talk about values, and we talk about what Thousand Oaks means to us. My mother and father took my sister, my older sister, Christie and I, when we were younger, many times as a family into Wildwood, including Mount Clef Ridge. And it was at that, at a very early age, I've come to appreciate this land. Protecting the land, and I've been involved in several issues the last 10 years of my life. I started here when I was 15. Spoke to Mr. Town many times about issues. He can attest to that. I loved him a lot, I'm sure. I love this place. I, it was never a political issue with me. It was never a personal issue with any candidate. And I am a founder of Save Our, co-founder of Save Our Ring of Green, and for the record, our agenda, if you will, has been about wildlife, has been about protecting the land because we care. We have never come out, as far as I can tell, and attacked any particular council member. Others can twist that statement around if they like to. But we are a non-political group. We love the land. There's nothing wrong with that. This project is what's wrong with Southern California. Everywhere I go, I see more houses on hillsides. I see more habitat being destroyed. And I don't know about any of the rest of you, but I care about what California's going to look like years and years down the road. If I can sum up, some people say this is a fair deal and a good deal, but before you deal, somebody needs to cut the cards, and I hope it's the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Belivitz-Guillet, followed by Suzanne Duckett.
My name is Carolyn Guo. I'm a new resident of Thousand Oaks, although I've owned property here for 25 years. I have driven by this property. I was impressed with the views up there. I did look around and saw the other homes in the area. They're very large, but I wouldn't consider them mansions. The house proposed, I think, could be considered a mansion size. I'm not sure why it has to be that size. I'm wondering how many bedrooms they have planned, how many bathrooms they have planned. I'm wondering how many families could live there. Certainly, if you have a garage the size of this one, it, it sounds like the size for several families. I moved here from Santa Monica. It was to get away from the density there. So, I'm hoping we can preserve the open space out here. There was a house built on the street where I grew up, and my mother lived her whole life, where a monster mansion was built. And it spoiled the whole neighborhood. After that, larger houses were built. The older houses were taken down. Larger houses put, built up in their place. But this one first mansion, monster mansion, was the largest on the street, and it just kind of stood out. I had done some political campaigning there, and I found there was one registered voter that lived in this huge mansion. It was 11-car garage at that house. I'm not sure why, it seemed like there was nobody else in the house at all. I'm not sure why that one person needed a house so huge. I gather, I, I'm new to this issue since I just moved here, and I've been trying to learn a lot tonight. It seems like this is a spec house. And so, why does it have to be so big? Who will buy the house? Who will move in? How many families will move in? It will set a precedent for the neighborhood. I think we should keep that open space. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Suzanne Duckett, followed by Amy Walker Davis.
Suzanne Duckett, I live in central Thousand Oaks. I want you to uphold the appeal and deny the Planning Commission decision. I'm embarrassed about our planners. I'm embarrassed about Mr. Smith, and I'm embarrassed about Mr. Winke. And I'm embarrassed about you people up there who are supposed to be watching out for us, the neighborhood. I don't want more wildlife running up and down arbaleous. I saw two coyotes jogging, narrowly jogging. And it was early in the evening. I don't want to see coyotes everywhere. I don't want to see rattlesnakes everywhere in our neighborhoods. My kid is going to be going swimming at CLU. I don't want to have to transport her back and forth worrying about the coyotes and the rattlesnakes. You squeeze the neck of this area more, and we're going to be overloaded. I want to thank the lady, this previous speaker here from Westlake. I'm embarrassed that more people aren't here from Westlake and North Ranch who are interested in preserving wildlife. Where are you tonight? I want you to call these people and tell them about how they make the decision tonight. The reason that we're all here is because there was an administration error. We need to pay for the administration error. We've paid for part of it. Now, we need to pick up the tab for the rest of it. This guy's made a ton of money. He doesn't need to make any more. But since there was this administration error, we need to pay for it. These animals need to live. CLU's impacted the wildlife. The retirement development has impacted the wildlife. The birds are going to nest elsewhere. I don't know where the hawks are. I don't know where the- I don't know where the rats are that the hawks and the rabbits are that the hawks were eating. You squeeze the neck of this area, and we're going to... Our streets are going to be overloaded with coyotes and rattlesnakes and rats. And thank you very much. Believe me, I'm watching the vote tonight, and if you vote for more wildlife displacement, I'm going to be bringing in a whole bunch more to enjoy our area.
Amy Walker Davis, followed by Nick Kidway.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Gillette, councilmember staff. Amy Walker Davis, I live in the Westlake Village portion of Thousand Oaks. I'm here tonight to ask you to grant the appeal and deny the request to build this Mount Clef property as submitted. Let me say that I'm in full support of property owners building their property. However, I'm also in full support, and equally support, of protecting our city's general plan, codes, and ordinances. I do not feel that this project meets the guidelines for approval. Some of the reasons have been stated, obviously, already. I actually like what the attorney said quite a bit. But some of the points I went through when I was reading. I feel it violates the intent of the Hillside Development Code and steepness of grade. It violates the minimum development and grading requirement for reasonable use of legal lot in steepness of grades greater than twenty-five percent. It violates the residential density for legally recorded lots prior to September seventy-one in steepness of grades greater than twenty-five percent. It violates the wildlife movement conservation policy CO six, twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-seven. And it fails the environmental impact report process by determining this is alternative to four homes built, when in fact, it's not possibly... Possible anymore since there are three lots were sold as open space. We must stand up to developers who want to build on the ridge lines, create urban sprawl, and impede wildlife movement between our mountain ranges. This project, in fact, will do the aforementioned. I urge the council tonight to protect our city and grant the appeal and vote no to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Kidway, followed by Debbie Gregory.
Nick Egbal Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, Director of Concerns, City of Thousand Oaks, Honorable Mayor, City Council. It's interesting that this issue is before you. It's even more interesting to read the letters in the green packet. And I have friends like Gordon Clint, who is very concerned and wants you to uphold the general plan. I too would be if I just read the newspaper article and if I just looked at the word like undevelopable. English is not my mother tongue. Undevelopable in English in a dictionary means something else. But in the land use context, it means something else. And I know that probably we will have a four-one vote tonight. But I challenge this council. It cannot be done that it was a five-zero for the... For the appellant. And then we would see another Kohan case where we have buildings, homes built in the wrong fashion. We would have another Lang Ranch here because this land use has certain rights. And the city council has spent two and a half million dollars already. And the interesting thing came out is that only a hundred dollars was contributed by people. I'm one of those people that would probably give five hundred dollars for an open spacing, but I think... I dare say, most people would not dip into their pockets. This is pure and simple politics, unfortunately. I would appreciate if... I don't think this is working, as usual. Is it? Okay, good. If TO TV will help me with the overhead. I have the appellant's vision of the wildlife corridor. I have the wrong slide. TO TV, can you show the slide? There it is. This is the wildlife corridor that exists right now. That's my poor vision of it.
Mr. Kidway, hold that microphone a little closer to you.
Okay. This is the appellant's vision of the wildlife corridor, which is with the lights. And it came out that the choke point is twelve feet wide near the twenty-three freeway. So I did this even before knowing that. Unfortunately, if we listen to the appellant's, this would be the end result because you would need a thing like Warner Center in order to support this kind of... These kind of purchases. And this is the real, honest truth and the practical truth. I drove around Newberry Park today, and this is a view from Lynn Road. There's a mansion right there. This is a mansion from Antelope Place in Newberry Park. If you look down from the Stagecoach Museum on Wentoo Park, you see all these mansions that were built in the last five years. I mean, let's be reasonable and fair. Please do not give away our rights.
Thank you. Debbie Gregory, followed by Tom Rich.
I'm Debbie Gregory. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I'm president of Save the Cadeau. And I'm asking you to not approve this project, to approve the appeal. The city has characterized... COSCA has characterized Mount Clef as the highest priority acquisition of open space. There's no question about that. We're in agreement. We paid, as Mr. Fox pointed out, almost three million dollars, two-point-eight million for the three lots, and the developer made a good profit, as he should have. Now let's talk about this project. Let's talk about common sense. I did a little research, and not one person sitting on the dais has a McMansion that is seventy-seven hundred square feet. It just is not consistent. The garage alone is seventeen hundred square feet. I wonder how many people in Thousand Oaks don't have a home that is seventeen hundred square feet, the size of this garage? It's to accommodate an RV. We should be worried about the wildlife, not the RV tonight. But the bottom line is that this project, you have the ability. You're the city council, and you have the obligation and the right... I'm sorry, I have to say this. Speakers have come here, they've given their time, and as council members, you need to pay attention. When you have sidebars among yourself, it's rude, and it's not respectful. And I'd like my time restored to have said that, too, please. Anyway, the city council has a right and obligation under the law to allow only minimum development. And the owner has the right to develop this project. Nobody is contesting that. But seventy-seven hundred square feet is not minimum development. At the planning commission, city staff testified, and I quote, "That the width of the wildlife corridor would be increased by the size of the house..." "If the house's size of the house was reduced." So let's reduce it. It isn't rocket science tree. Let's save the wildlife. We have an opportunity to preserve something that, when it's gone, it's going to be gone forever. We're never going to get it back. Each one of you ran as slow growth. You called yourselves slow-growth leaders. So what I'm asking you is to step up to the plate. We've heard the rhetoric. You have an opportunity tonight to show that you are slow growth and to enforce our general plan. Don't come back and say, "We had to approve it or we get sued." You don't have to approve this project as it's presented. Let's work together. Let's extend an olive branch. And let's work together to save this fourth lot. We have someone that will buy it. We have... Can find creative ways. I'll put in five hundred dollars, too, and I bet there's a lot of citizens in this town. Mount Clef is one of the most important pieces of open space that we have. So step up to the plate. I want to make a couple points to get into the record. This violates the intent and the spirit of the Hillside Development Code and steepness of grade. It violates minimum development and grading requirements for reasonable use, and the term is reasonable. Again, please, step up to the plate. Please make a project that's consistent and minimum development. You have the power. Let's see where you stand tonight. People are watching. Thank you.
Tom Rich, followed by Mary Weisbrock.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Tom Rich, Thousand Oaks. I'm not going to talk about a lot of the details of this, but to give you some... The way I think you should be thinking about the things that you've heard tonight. The question before you is a matter of law, of ethics, of science, and of conscience. The Planning Commission appined the law required approval of this project, so they voted four to one to approve it. Accuracy of opinions is subject to dispute, and many people have given you reasons for that. If you differ from the opinion of the Planning Commission, as I do, you'll agree with me that this project should not be allowed. Now, this... Normal laws, according to the Planning Commission, said they had to approve it, more or less. There are extraordinary parts of the law, as you've heard from Mr. Angel, that provide for extraordinary circumstances, which I believe this is. So there are legal tools that will allow you to prevent building this house there, and I think there are good reasons for it. Okay, ethical considerations apply on both sides of the issue. Property owner should have the right to do what he likes with his property. However, when the greater good of society is at risk, society can constrain any owner's use of any property. That's long-established policy of law across the country. Here, the owner asserts he wants to build a house for his family. It sounds worthwhile and should be a good thing. However, there was testimony in the Planning Commission. He's said the same thing twice before. So we have the possibility. You use your judgment as to whether this is actually for his family, for, you know, for the good of them on and on, or whether he's just trying to play on your sympathy so he can make more money off of this project. Second ethical consideration is of greater importance. You're entrusted with preservation of this part of the world. Land use decisions that you authorize determine the environment for people, not just now, but on into the future for a long time. Destruction of the environment would be a problem, we all agree. Your action to preserve the environment would have large ethical and moral import. So think about that. Justification of any particular course of action by science is disputable. Authoritative scientists say the South Coast Missing Linkages Project... In the South Coast Missing Linkages Project, say the preservation of this wildlife corridor is very important, and imply building this house would cause serious harm to the environment of a large area. In contrast, consultants hired by the city say the house will leave a residual corridor that's sufficient, and the city has good experience with wildlife corridors. So we have scientific evidence on both sides. So the conclusion is... There's no conclusion. The scientists dispute almost anything. You can get opinions all over the place. But so there are a number of opinions there. So law, ethics, and science are all ambiguous on this issue. Well, I think you know what I'm saying. Mr. Gillette, Mr. Matheri said we could... Were opposed to this when it came up four years ago. You can use eminent domain. Ask the staff. There are ways you can use it. It's for the future of a large community, much beyond Thousand Oaks. Please think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Weisbrock, followed by Denise Elliston.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Mary Weisbrock, Chair of Save Open Space Santa Monica Mountains. Save Open Space supports the Save Our Ring of Greens appeal because there is nothing to justify this huge increase in size in this house and garage. This huge mansion and garage now totals seven thousand seven hundred square feet. It is incompatible in size and grading for this sensitive hillside and wildlife corridor This is larger than... About twenty percent larger when you add in the seventeen hundred-foot garage than any of the other homes in the area. And this is in a hillside area within the city. These are your laws. Over the years, you've decided to protect these hillside areas. We are not talking and comparing it with the Santa Rosa Valley houses. They are in a valley. We are talking about your city and your city laws, and are you going to uphold these laws? Your city laws say that if the average slope of the project exceeds thirty-five percent, that you should preserve the area in natural open space. And it cannot be shown that this is minimum development. Seven thousand seven hundred square feet house and garage. One lady who testified, her house is the size of that garage. You have the legal right to say no to this huge mansion in this sensitive hillside area in your city. You made this city have strong laws to protect its hillsides. Are you going to ignore these laws tonight? This is also a critical choke point necessary for the movement of mountain lines into the Santa Monica Mountains. This environmental document did not adequately analyze the edge effect that this huge mansion will have on this wildlife corridor choke point. Since this is a discretionary permit, you have the legal right to support Save Our Ring of Greens appeal and deny this incompatible project. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Elliston, followed by our last speaker, Gail Hughes.
Good evening. I'm going to read a letter that was... I'm a resident of Hidden Meadows Estates, which is directly below the area that Mr. Dubin plans to build his home. This was a letter October fifteenth, sent to the city council, to the Thousand Oaks City Council. "The Board of Hidden Meadows Estates supports the appeal against the decision of the Planning Commission to approve HPD 2002-80, Michael Dubin. Mr. Dubin has made no attempt to discuss or reveal the final plans for this proposed development with the neighboring homeowners in Hidden Meadows or the Board of our Homeowners Association. This project will have a major negative impact on the..." Oh, excuse me. "...on the view shed in our neighborhood and has already affected our property values. A nearby home sale was recently canceled due to the threat of Mr. Dubin's project. The previous houses built by this developer on Mount Clef Ridge Line included mitigation of the view shed. There was a berm on the north, that's the Santa Rosa Valley side of the building. This project includes no such mitigation. Mr. Dubin claims that this new house will be his family home. He has twice used this emotional claim in the Santa Rosa Valley and then sold houses within a short time. One of those houses was within Hidden Meadows Estates, where he tried to use this to justify waivers to our architectural homes..." Oh, excuse me, codes. "We urge you to reject this proposed development until such time as Mr. Dubin can come to an agreement with the neighbors on both the Santa Rosa Valley and the Thousand Oaks side of this project." This was written by Scott Behringer, the president of Hidden Meadows Estates Association.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Gail Hughes.
I'm Gail Hughes. I live on Andalusia Drive in Santa Rosa Valley. As I look at the picture of the plot plan for this development, it just... And listen to what this house was going to look like, even though I didn't see the pictures, but I've been hearing about it being stepped up the hillside. That concerns me greatly because when I look at our homes on Andalusia that come up the hillside, they're not stacked, one house after the other. This would stack behind other homes. Also, the view shed would be going up three, you know, steps, which would make the view shed show even more than what the houses are on our street now. And knowing building... If you want to build, you want to build for a view, there's not going to be any mitigation to change that. I'm very concerned about that. Secondly, I am concerned about the wildlife moving and getting actually just bottlenecked right there. It comes in at an angle, and when the wildlife comes, it's going to scoot down towards all the other homes down below even more. Thirdly, I'd encourage you to listen to the residents, both of Santa Rosa Valley and Thousand Oaks. I've not heard one person who has supported the building of this... On this property that is a resident in that area. And it just... I find it unconscionable that no one is listening to the people that live in those areas. So instead of asking you to listen to it, I'm asking Mr. Dubin and Mrs. Dubin to listen to it. They chose to take this opportunity. They're choosing to put themselves through a lot of grief right now. I asked them to choose to take an offer from others, to buy it, get rid of the headache, and sell it to the open space. I would just ask the Dubins to now think very seriously about this and be people of integrity, rather than trying to prove a point that they can do something and make a little bit more money. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our... That concludes our speakers, uh, at this time. Let me ask first, are there any, any questions, uh, at the conclusion of the speakers for staff? And then I'm going to go back to the appellant and the applicant for rebuttal, or would you like me to do that first?
No.
Pardon? Rebuttal's last. Rebuttal's will be last. Okay. Mrs. Irwin?
Yeah, I, I would like the city attorney to clarify the issue of the recording dates, 1971 and 1974.
Thank you. Um, it's my understanding, as was said, that the recorded date of the subdivision was 1974. Um, what the attorney was referring to in section 9 dash 4 point, 9 dash 43 point 105 of the, um, ordinance, it talks about that, a, um, lots that were recorded prior to 1971 and then were later rezoned and added to the HPD zone, um, would be subject to all the provisions except the one having to do with, um, the dwelling units, and it would be allowed one dwelling unit. So, the argument I'm assuming that he's trying to make is that since this lot was recorded after 1974, or after 1971, then the provisions apply, and they can't have a house because the lot's not big enough. Um, be it as it may, that's what the ordinance says, we still have to do with what is legal and constitutional. And in this case, you can't say he, if, if it's a legal lot, it's a legal lot, he is entitled, they are entitled, to build a house on that lot, and we can't say, gee, you can only have half a house, or three-quarters of a house. So, I understand the argument, but I would advise this council that, um, notwithstanding what the ordinance says, that they are entitled to have a home built on it. There's one other thing that I would like to put in the record, and if Mr. Prescott can add to what I'm going to say, I'd appreciate that. It just confuses this whole issue more, which is that the subdivision was done in 1974. This area, these four legal lots, were added to the HPD zone at a later point in time. At the time they were added, the city was unaware that there were four legal lots created. The city believed there was one. And that was due to an error by the county recorder. So, given the true facts of, that there were four legal lots, we don't even know if the city council had known that at the time, if they would have rezoned it and had legal lots being in, not in conformity with the zoning ordinance. It's just another little facet that adds to the sort of underpinnings of this. But clearly, they, it is a legal lot, they have a right to a reasonable use of that lot, and in this case, it would be building a single-family home on it. I hope that helps.
Mrs. Irwin?
I, I also, um, wanted to know, can I ask a speaker to come up that filled out a speaker card?
If you want, if you want to recall someone and ask them a question?
Well, actually, Mr. Dubin said that he was available for questions.
That's correct.
So, can we ask Mr. Dubin to come up?
Mr. Dubin, would you please come down? Mr. Dubin, please give your name and community of residence. Thank you.
My name is Michael Dubin, and I currently reside at 11618 North Hill Drive in Moore Park, California.
Okay, I, I had, you know, it's unclear to me whether Sorog has made you an offer for the last parcel or not, and whether or not you are willing to sell it for open space.
Uh, no offer's been made, uh, to my knowledge, and we've been working on this for a long period of time. And contrary to what's been said tonight, we do want to live there. Uh, I am a builder, but this is a home that I want to build for myself. We've moved three times in the last 14 years. If that makes us terrible people, then, uh, I, I don't understand how. Uh, we have people in Moore Park that I see moving to, uh, newer homes as they're built and leaving the home they're in. Does that mean that the house they were in wasn't their residence?
Uh, you know, actually, I, I think that that argument is completely irrelevant, whether or not you're going to live in the house or not. But what I wanted to know is, are you willing to sell the parcel for open space to Sorog for, and, and have you spoken to them?
Um, can I interject? I, I think it's fair that you asked him whether, that he has, there's been an offer made, but it's really not the appropriate place to have that discussion of whether he's willing to sell it for open space. I, I'm sorry to interject, and maybe Mr. Cohen would like to, um, help respond to that answer, but we, we can't be starting negotiations or anything from the dice, and that's my concern with your question.
I, I know, I understand that. I just, I'm, I wasn't clear on, on, um, you know, if there's been any interaction with the group or not.
Fair question, in, in this, in this sense. Uh, and I, I am, uh, rising because there was a conversation between Mr. Burley and myself. And I know Mr. Burley has also made contact with Mr. Dubin's Los Angeles office counsel, Mr. Rue. Uh, there has been conversation, very similar to the question that you asked, would you be willing to sell if we were able to buy? But that's about as far as it's gone. Now, I, I think he didn't pose it, if we were able to buy, but would you be willing to sell? Um, the Dubins want to build a house, they don't want to be put off for several years while, uh, funds are raised. There's never been a price attached to an offer, there's never been terms attached to an offer, there's never been a down payment, there's never been a tender. So, it, it's really, uh, at, at this point, I don't doubt the sincerity of these folks that would like to purchase, but there's been no showing on their part that they either have a serious intent nor they have the capability of, of paying for a lot of this, of this value.
All right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your questions? Thank you, Mr. Dubin.
Thank you, Mr. Dubin.
Any addition? Okay. Okay, staff, any comments or, or observations, uh, statements on the, on the testimony that's been heard? Mr. Prescott?
I'll, I'll make a few comments, and I think other, other staff would like to as well. Um, I think you heard from at least one and maybe two people that the Mount Clef area was, quote, "the highest priority for open space acquisition in the valley," according to COSCA. Um, I worked along with Mr. Town on compiling the, the listed properties and recommending priority categories and submitting that to the COSCA board, uh, which ultimately adopted them. Um, the Mount Clef area is one of the highest priorities, it is not the only highest priority. Uh, there were probably 15 or 20 different areas within the, uh, Thousand Oaks Valley here that were placed in one of three categories. Each category had, uh, not only multiple properties, but multiple areas. Um, the Priority One group, I believe, include, um, valuable, uh, land in the Newbury Park area, in the, um, Southern Ridgeline area, the, the main ridge that, uh, is south of the freeway skyline, Westlake Village area. So, um, and I think we've demonstrated through Attachment Two, I'm sorry, Attachment Three to Report, the, uh, significant sums of money and effort that the city has actually spent in the Mount Clef area, uh, which, uh, really dwarfs the amounts of money that we've spent in other, other areas of the community. So, I just, that's mainly to put it in perspective. Um, secondly, I think Mr. Angel said that he sent an email to me, uh, today regarding rodenticides. Um, I checked my email all day long, the most recent, uh, was at 10 minutes to 6:00 before he came to these chambers, and I, I did not get that email. Another, another point I'd like to, um, just, just make sure the council understands, which I believe you do from the written material, that the HPD zone, uh, really regulates the amount of grading. Um, the ordinance says the minimal grading to place a house and a pad and, uh, a driveway on the property. It does not, uh, have a criterion related to the size of the house, per se. And those are my comments. I think, I know Mr. Smith wanted to make some comments, and then, then perhaps the others, if they, if they have comments.
Uh, thank you. I would like to respond to a couple of issues that, that were mentioned during the public testimony. Um, uh, there was a comment, and, um, comments were made regarding the missing linkages study, and as the council is aware, there was additional information, uh, submitted this evening pertaining to those studies. Uh, I would like to, um, make the record, uh, complete here, that we have, in fact, included references to this missing linkages study when it was initially, um, submitted in draft form. Uh, our consultants reviewed those reports. The recommendations regarding this area have essentially not changed since, uh, 2004. Uh, so I want to at least, uh, bring that to the council's attention, that we were aware of this study, it is properly referenced in the IR, and that the recommendations of that study have not changed materially. Uh, we have pointed out in our, uh, presentation this evening that the recommendation for a, um, minimum wildlife movement corridor width of 1.2 miles is, uh, essentially would include that entire area from Santa Rosa Valley Road all the way over to, to, um, Olson Road. Uh, that is simply not feasible to accomplish. Uh, land use patterns that have been established in this area, uh, that are beyond this jurisdiction of the city of Thousand Oaks, that lie within Ventura County, as well as the city, preclude that, um, that kind of, uh, wildlife movement corridor width. There has been, there have been some comments this evening regarding my conversations with, uh, Mr. Paul Edelman, who is the Senior Biologist with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. Uh, I can confirm to the council that we have had numerous conversations regarding this wildlife movement corridor. Uh, Mr. Edelman is an expert on wildlife movement corridors in the Santa Monica Mountains. Uh, I have conferred with him, our consultants have conferred with him, and the recommendations of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy have been supportive of the city's effort to acquire these parcels and maintain, uh, the wildlife movement corridor as we've depicted it. Uh, Mr. Edelman, uh, has agreed, uh, previously, that a wildlife movement corridor of 400 feet in width, uh, would have been sufficient. Uh, we're now proposing 600 feet. Uh, the conservancy is in agreement with that, um, with that proposal. Uh, the National Park Service has, has, um, been made aware of, of that proposal. Uh, no one has sent any comments to me, either by email or in, in written form, objecting to that proposal. So, I, I want to make it clear that we have worked with all of these agencies regarding, um, the wildlife linkage that's, that's being proposed this evening. Um, I think it's also important for the general public to be aware that the Environmental Impact Report, uh, doesn't su- support the project, per se. Uh, the environmental analysis that we provide for the council and the Planning Commission evaluates what the physical impacts of the project are. We take no opinion, there is no recommendation in the environmental analysis whether or not this is a good project or a bad project. We strictly look at the facts with regard to the, um, impacts on the environment. And I think I've made it clear to you earlier in my presentation that without taking any issue, uh, with regard to the size of the home, if we look at reducing the size of the home, and we look at the physical change in, in the impact analysis, um, that we can say fairly conclusively, uh, or can, we can say conclusively, that the environmental effects do not change significantly with regard to grading in 25 percent slope, brush clearance, uh, habitat removal. It certainly does not materially affect the width of the wildlife movement corridor, and it would not change, uh, any ridgeline silhouette in condition. So, I, I just want to make that clear, that it, it strictly looks at the physical effects of the project, and in this case, the one lot alternative, and, um, we stand by our conclusions and the work of our consultant, or in-con consultants that, that prepared this report. Um, there was one issue, um, brought up by, um, Mr. Angel regarding, uh, rodenticides, and I want to make it clear to the council that we're fully aware of the issue of rodenticides. Uh, there is no need to respond directly in this Environmental Impact Report, and I'll tell you why. We're dealing with one lot. Along this wildlife movement corridor, there are essentially 100 lots or so adjoining this, this wildlife movement corridor. The chances of mammals encountering rodenticides along the entire corridor is significant, and I don't think anybody would debate that issue. People who use rodenticides to control, uh, ground squirrels and rabbits that are damaging their lawns and their gardens is a real problem adjoining open space, but this one single home would not constitute a significant unavoidable impact when you consider the cumulative effect of all of the homes that adjoin this open space corridor. So, to suggest that this EIR is inadequate because this is not specifically addressed, or to suggest that this one, one home would cause a situation that would be unavoidably adverse and significant, is in my opinion, uh, inappropriate and would not withstand scrutiny, uh, if this were to be challenged in a court. So, I want to make that clear as well. I, I think that completes my, my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to respond more in general in terms of open space preservation efforts in this area, and to follow up, uh, what, uh, Mr. Prescott mentioned. I would like to, again, draw the, uh, council's attention to page 22 of your packet, because it lists the, the actions that the city has taken to preserve open space here, and I've been involved in a lot of these. And they go beyond the recent purchases of the three lots. In fact, if you total it up, about 42 acres of land has been preserved in the Mount Clef area by the city, um, during its history. And we have been involved since 1995 in the acquisition of 10 parcels through four different negotiations from six different owners to protect land in the Mount Clef area. Um, also, just to clarify the record, a total of about $2.9 million has been spent to protect open space in Mount Clef. $2.485 million was spent on the last three parcels that we purchased earlier this year. Um, but there were other parcels that were bought before that. We purchased one, in fact, from Mr. and Mrs. Dubin, most recently, on the ridgeline. And then prior to that, bought parcels from the University of California and, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Callas, who you may have recalled.
Oh, that's right.
The bottom line, just again, from a, from a broad perspective, is that we have spent more money to protect open space on Mount Clef than in any other area in the city's 42-year history, both in total dollars and on a per-acre basis. So, I think that's clear that the cit, that staff, and frankly, the council, has stepped up to the plate and has protected a significant amount of land here, and I think the record needs to reflect that. Um, it has been a priority area for us, and I think the facts, again, is contained in your packet, and particularly on page 22 attests to that. If we look at percentages, as, um, Councilmember De La Peña asked earlier, those are summarized also, I should note, on page 23 of your packet. If we look at the original 25.7 acre area that was originally proposed for four houses, the recent purchases plus the conservation easement, uh, will protect about 90 percent of that area in a natural condition, uh, and about 96 percent of that original 25.7 acre area in an ungraded condition. And then again, if we go back to the current lot under question, 59 percent of it would be protected via the conservation easement, about 27 percent would be in a fuel modification or brush clearance area, and then 14 percent would be graded. So, I guess my point is simply that we have done, uh, we have put in an extraordinary effort, is the best way to put it, I think, everybody here at the city, to protect land in this area. Uh, whether it's enough, obviously, is, is always going to be a, a point of, of discussion, but, um, I think the facts speak for themselves.
Thank you. Any additional comments from staff?
I just wanted to also add a few more comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tracy?
Yes. Um, just to, to briefly respond to Mr. Angel's comments regarding the general plan, Mr. Prescott went into depth about the general plan designation of undevelopable, but I wanted to remind the council, when you look at the general plan... But I wanted to remind the council, when you look at the general plan and the designation of undevelopable, it does not prohibit development. It discourages and encourages protection of those areas and not development of it, but it does not have an outright prohibition on development. So the designation of undevelopable does not prohibit development, and that's why you would look at your zoning code to determine what type of use is best proposed for that area. The other issue that I wanted to discuss is some comments made regarding the EIR and the significant impacts. A comment was suggested that if, that staff had concurred that the impacts from the EIR for the four-lot division, or four-lot project, applied to the one-lot project. That's not it at all. If you recall, in the original EIR under the four-lot project, it concluded that there were two significant impacts that could not be mitigated to a less than significant level. Those had to do with your wildlife corridor, the width of the wildlife corridor, and it had to do with your grading in the landform area. Those were the only two impacts that could not be mitigated to a less than significant level. Had the city council or planning commission approved that four-lot project, it would have required what's called a statement of overriding consideration in order to approve it. This project that is before you, the one-lot alternative that was considered and evaluated in the revised and recirculated EIR as an alternative, would significantly reduce those two impacts to a less than significant level. It would reduce the amount of grading into your 25 percent slope area from 2.09 acres to .57 acres. And it would also result in a widening of your wildlife corridor from 250 feet to 600 feet at its narrowest point. It is staff's opinion that the two significant impacts identified in the four-lot project would be significantly reduced to a less than significant level under the one-lot project, or the one-house project. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions of staff? All right. Thank you. There being none, we'll conclude with our testimony. The first speaker is the applicant, Mr. Chuck Cohen. Mr. Cohen, you have five minutes for rebuttal. And Mr. Cohen will be followed by the appellant, Mr. Burley, who will also have five minutes.
Western bench, for the Dubins. Quite properly, I really cannot add to the information that you've already received this evening from your attorneys and from your staff. Again, I listened very carefully to the testimony, and without having an opportunity to see any of the written material, but I still am of the strong opinion that there is nothing on the record that should disturb the recommendation and the findings of the planning commission, or the recommendation by your staff. With that, we would rest our case and ask that the appeal be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions of Mr. Cohen? Thank you, Mr. Cohen. It's my understanding, Mr. Angel, you're going to do the final rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Angel, you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, I sent the EPA document about the anti-coagulant issue to the only email address that's on Mr. Prescott's webpage, and it's a generic, I think it says "Community Services." So I couldn't find individual planners, but that's the one that's available to the public, so I used that one. That's where it was sent, and I have to transmit it. In response to the anti-coagulant issue, and the very significant effect it has on the wildlife in the Santa Monica Mountains, it's only one of two areas discussed in the EPA document in the United States, is because this is a choke point. Now, even if the effect were individually insignificant, as Mr. Smith says, and we don't know, because the EIR doesn't say it, and it has to be in the EIR, that's the first error. But the second error is, then, if it is cumulatively significant, it is a significant effect, and as Mr. Smith has conceded, cumulatively, the issue becomes very important, and cumulatively means looking at past projects, pending projects, and future projects. And so, SEQA Guideline 15-355 makes it very clear, individually minor projects, when their collective effect becomes significant, then the effect is a significant adverse impact. This is a very serious issue that has been raised by the National Park Service, state parks, and other public agencies, and has come to the attention of the EPA. It has been completely ignored, not only as an individual effect, but as a cumulative impact as well. And that makes this EIR an illegally defective document. Now, there's a much broader issue, and only the public seems to understand, that we're discussing an EIR that has a wrong project description. Staff responds at page seven, there's no requirement to modify the project description merely because the decision-making body approves something other than the original project described in the EIR. Well, I agree with that, only though if that original project still exists, if that original project is still an option. And that's how the process works. If you have an original project, and a better environmentally, more advantageous alternative, then the council can go for that alternative. Here, the original project no longer exists. By the time the revised draft EIR came out, that project was history. It was legally infeasible. So there's only a project of one unit. And what the EIR then should have done, as we pointed out, provided you an alternatives analysis, as the Supreme Court requires, corresponding to two criteria, environmentally more advantageous and feasible. That means, what are better alternatives to this one big mansion that has a garage, that, by the way, is also bigger than my house? But maybe public interest attorneys make a little less money as others. But that's neither here nor there. There are environmentally superior alternatives, from an acquisition, from eminent domain, from no project, to smaller houses, to, and by the way, staff has said, this is about the smallest feasible you can get. How can that be? The original EIR makes it even clearer that the increase of the building, of the grading for the building pad and for the driveway on Lot 4 is from 0.52 acres to 0.92 acres. That's a 70 percent increase. So it is simply false, factually incorrect, to come here and to state that this is the minimum development, and that this is the maximum open space on that lot that you can get. That is a misrepresentation. It is in the very EIR. You can just opt for the Lot 4 development that was described in the project that's no longer before you, which is the four-unit development. And that's a very important issue. So what this all seems to boil down to is maximize the development on this lot, a development that may be very unlikely to be built, and then, when the agencies come and buy him out, he gets maximum market value. Well, our Supreme Court only, this June, has held in Regency Outdoor Advertising versus City of Los Angeles, and I quote, "An inverse condemnation plaintiff does not establish that its property has been taken merely by showing that government action has somewhat decreased the market value of the property." If you decrease the market value of the property by following your hillside plant development zone and minimizing the graded area as you can, as the EIR proves to you in Appendix 4, you're not taking the property. You're only applying the law, which is the hillside management ordinance, which, by the way, also--
Thank you, Mr. Angel. Your time is up.
If I could just finish that sentence, Mr. Mayor. By the way, that hillside management--
Mr. Angel, your time is up.
--allows you to reduce the size of the project.
Mr. Angel, thank you very much. Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions of staff? There being none at this time, I'll close the public hearing, open for council discussion and/or motion. Mr. Fox?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to move to deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the planning commission to certify the EIR, adopt the mitigation monitoring plan, and approve the HPD 2002-80 with revised conditions, Condition 41 as set forth, and to allow the construction of one single-family home on the 6.8 acre existing parcel at 355 Briar Bluff Circle, based on the findings that are attached in the report. Briefly, just to comment, I think staff has done a good job in outlining a number of the issues that were raised during the course of tonight's hearing. And I won't go through and summarize all of them, but essentially, the project is appropriately zoned, it meets the city's precise plan of design, it's not on a ridgeline. And in answer to one of your questions, in 1989, I helped author the Ridgeline Protection Ordinance. And so, know a little bit about with Mr. Prescott, then Councilmember Bob Lewis, we looked at the city's ridgeline, went out and visited this property. By no stretch of the imagination can one argue that this home is on a ridgeline. It is 70 feet below the ridgeline, and it's located on a parcel that you can't see, basically, from the city of Thousand Oaks. It does look down on the Santa Rosa area. And so, I certainly understand and appreciate the residents that have come here, that don't live in the city of Thousand Oaks, that live in Santa Rosa, that would have concerns about the development of this parcel, because it does, in fact, look down on your home. Notwithstanding that, it meets all the criteria, all the policies of the city. I think there was some effort to, in some way, confuse the general plan designation of undevelopable, which we've had many times over the course, certainly since I've been on the council, with some notion that because a general plan designation is undevelopable, therefore, nothing can be built. I think common sense dictates to all of us that that would constitute a taking, and government can't do that. So that's where the reasonable use principle comes in. And on all parcels throughout the city, we are required to provide for some reasonable use. Now, this parcel is almost seven acres large. To compare the size of this home to a home in Thousand Oaks that normally is built on maybe a quarter of an acre, or on a large lot in Thousand Oaks would be a half acre, just doesn't make, just doesn't make sense. The footprint of this home, it's a split-level home, is smaller than the house next door, which by comparison, if you're up in the area, has its own private putting green, just to give you a little idea of the types of homes that are in this area. And so, I think staff has done a good job. The arguments that I heard against this essentially boil down to this. This person doesn't need a home this size. That's really something that I don't think it would be proper for council to make a decision on. How big does someone's home need to be? I think we need to look at it in objective standing with respect to the size of the parcel, what are the existing homes in the area, some objective measurement. But just to make, essentially, a subjective or emotional argument that this house is too big for this person can't be the basis for the council's decision. Who lives in the home? I think Mrs. Irwin talked a little bit about that. Completely irrelevant to our findings and our discussion here tonight. Whether Mr. Dubin lives in the home or sells the home, that can't be something for local government to decide. This is a piece of private property. This gentleman has a right to develop the property within the city's guidelines, within the city's policies, and do it essentially what he wants with it. We had testimony tonight, and Mr. Dubin's going to live in the home. But again, that's an irrelevant discussion for our proceedings here this evening. We also heard testimony, arguments against that, Mr. Dubin has, quote, "made too much money on this property." Again, a subjective or emotional argument that the council can't look at. What we do know is, council spent $2.5 million to purchase three parcels to go to what I believe is the one relevant discussion tonight, and that is the wildlife corridor. I think staff has pointed out that we spent more money on those three parcels than essentially any other area in the city of Thousand Oaks. In the city's history, we have not spent that much money. I personally take exception to the notion or the suggestion that we don't care about that, because about eight years ago, I set up the very funding mechanism that this money came from, the golf fees and monies from the city general fund. We did the best we could. And as I listened to the testimony tonight, I heard names like Linda Parks and Steve Bennett. Last time I checked, both those members on the Board of Supervisors. Has there been any effort made to find one more vote on the Board of Supervisors so they can do their fair share? We bought three. Why don't you have the Board of Supervisors to buy one parcel? One of which is in Mrs. Parks's district, both in the Santa Rosa Valley and the city of Thousand Oaks. Maybe we should ask the county to help out in that area. Finally, is the issue of whether this is a legal challenge or not. I think council needs to look at this and not hide behind, and I say that respectfully, whether we're going to get sued or not. This is a reasonable request. It meets all the city's policies and guidelines. Whether we're going to get sued or not is a separate issue. We've done all we can to protect the wildlife corridor. It's a reasonable request on a piece of property that is within the existing planning policies and procedures, and we need to, basically, deny the appeal. And I ask for a yes vote.
Thank you. And a motion, comments to the motion? Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Mr. Fox covered an awful lot of it. There may be a temptation to try to reduce the size of this house, but we do have to remember that the pad is already 16 percent smaller than the adjacent two houses. The footprint's 20 percent smaller. The grading amount is less. So if we were to reduce the size of the house, quite likely, and to put a thought into the applicant's head, he might lop off part of the second story. That's not going to achieve anything. If we cut the house in half, we're only going to increase the wildlife corridor by 15 feet, probably, possibly. That's really insufficient. We have gone to a great deal of length to increase the wildlife corridor from 250, which Game and Fish has commonly approved, to up to 600 feet at the narrowest point. Two kilometers would be a great wildlife corridor. Practical? No, it isn't. Certainly not here. So with all of that, I support the motion.
Thank you. Mrs. Irwin?
Okay. First of all, I know that at times we've been at odds, but I do want to thank Ms. Zirinsky and Mr. Burley for their efforts in preserving the corridor. There has been a significant amount of it preserved, and we certainly appreciate everything that you've done for that. And I also want, I'm probably going to be saying the same thing as some of the other council members, but I want to make it perfectly clear that we are very concerned with the wildlife corridor, and, again, spent an exorbitant amount of money to preserve that wildlife corridor. The minimum acceptable corridor is 250 feet, and thanks to good planning by city staff, throughout the city, we have corridors that are 250 feet. This one is 600 feet at its narrowest point. And again, I will reiterate that down the road at the 23, it narrows to, it narrows to 10 feet. So that really is the choke point. A 600-foot wildlife corridor is not the choke point. I also want to say to all the residents, this property is facing Santa Rosa Valley. The corridor is not visible to the residents of Thousand Oaks, and the house will not be visible to the residents of Thousand Oaks. In my opinion, staff has done an outstanding job of addressing all the objections of the appellant. The house is, as I mentioned before, extremely large. As Mr. Glancy said, reducing the size by a half will only add 10 feet to the corridor, but I think also significantly, there will be no significant decrease in the amount of grading. So I can't tell Mr. Dubin how large that, how large he can build his house or not. I personally would prefer no home, and I would be very happy if Soroj could get together with Mr. Dubin, and you would be able to purchase the last lot. But right at this point, I cannot take away the rights of Mr. Dubin to build on his property. And it's, you know, unfortunate, but sometimes we have to do the right thing, even though it's not the popular thing. So with that, I will support Mr. Fox's motion.
Thank you. Ms. Bill De La Peña?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has indeed taken great steps in order to preserve as much of the wildlife corridor as possible. $1.8 million, almost $1.9 million, out of our open space fund is a lot of money, with the remaining $600,000 coming from other agencies such as the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, which, in its letter to the city, states that every square foot-- that every square foot of extra land that can be permanently preserved increases the long-term potential capability of the corridor. That is a very important statement. It says, basically, that whatever we can do to save and protect the wildlife corridor, we should do. And it is certainly within the discretion of the city council to use discretionary, to use its discretion to determine whether a seventy-seven-hundred-square-foot mansion is indeed a reasonable use of a lot. Regarding the EIR, the EIR in itself states, as staff has mentioned, it doesn't really promote the project one way or another, but it does say that there are various elements, various points in the conservation element, which is part of our general plan, that could be found to be violated by this particular project. I'm counting one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight points in the city's conservation element, part of our general plan, where there is an inconsistency that this project creates. The project, as proposed, is indeed inconsistent, and really not in compliance with the city's general plan, because the city's general plan determines that area to be undevelopable. Simply because the project, the mansion, may not be visible to the resident of Thousand Oaks, doesn't mean that we can just give the developer carte blanche to build it. We do have guidelines that we need to adhere to regardless of who suffers the impacts, whether it is the other side of Mount Clef or the Thousand Oaks side of Mount Clef. The permission the applicant seeks in order to grade beyond the thirty-five percent, according to our HPD, is something where the council has discretion. It is a request for a permit which does not have to be granted. And we have heard enough evidence tonight, and I'm actually, I was impressed that Sorog had legal counsel, because too many times, we have citizens groups who stand here and argue their point unsuccessfully. And sometimes, it does help when you do have legal presentation or representation. And the arguments made by the council tonight representing Sorog are actually, or could be found to be, quite valid. In the resolution, it states, which was passed by the Planning Commission, it states that mitigation measures are identified in the environmental impact report, and that a monitoring program needs to be in place. I am concerned about a monitoring program simply because we do have evidence of one home that was already built there, that is not in compliance with the city's conditions. And an infinity pool was built instead of a berm, so I do wonder how effective a monitoring The HPD zone states that when you permit grading into thirty-five percent terrain, that one-hundred percent must be preserved, with the exception of the building path and the driveway. And although the area may have more than sixty percent that is ungraded, there are only four acres, which is fifty-nine percent, which are going to be preserved as open space. The argument tonight is not whether to deny it outright. There is obviously a legally recorded lot, and there is, seems to be, an issue tonight with that as well. But I would have liked to have seen a proposal to reduce the size of the house, and I'm very disappointed that that did not happen, especially in the light of the fact that the council does have discretion to reduce the size of the house in order to improve the wildlife corridor. And that being said, I'm disappointed that the mansion will go in, that the council is not using its discretion, and therefore, I am not able to support the motion.
I should mention before I have my comment, that we also had three written statement cards, all supporting the appeal. All of the council members have had an opportunity to look at those cards. Ultimately, the decision that I make comes down to reasonableness, and in exercising my discretion, I wanted to think about what goal I was trying to achieve, and whether exercising my discretion assisted in meeting that goal. The goal in this whole thing, when I brought this matter to the council over two years ago, was to protect that wildlife corridor, recognizing what would happen if all of the development occurred. And lastly, when exercising my discretion, my decision needs to be supported by the facts that are part of the record. With that thought in mind, a series of questions: Is the project located within a protected ridgeline? No. If a smaller house is built, would it protect more of the wildlife corridor? No. Does the general plan prohibit development since it is designated as undevelopable? No. Does the zoning code prohibit grading in twenty-five percent slope areas? No. Does this project destroy the wildlife corridor? No. Is a home visible from a scenic corridor? No. Does this project violate HPD ordinance? No. Probably most impressive for me are residents that came from the Santa Rosa Valley, because I understand and I sympathize with the visual pollution that has been allowed to occur out there. As you drive through the Santa Rosa Valley, west to east, and especially as you get closer to the eastern end of the valley, near Tierra Hada, every single knoll now has a house sitting on top of it. There's one housing tract now on the north side of Santa Rosa Valley, just as you come to the end of it, which has multiple homes looming over the entire valley. There's no effort, no attempt whatsoever, to try and protect the ridgelines out there. And this pollution, this visual pollution, has now been allowed to permeate into the Tierra Hada Valley. And if you go up to the Reagan Library and look down the Tierra Hada Valley, every one of those knolls now has a mansion sitting on top of it. And when you drive into the Tierra Hada Valley, which was supposed to be protected by the four public agencies that have an interest out there, you used to be able to drive into something that was somewhat serene, and quiet, and restful. Now, if you go in after sunset, you're greeted with that illuminated calliope, your driving range on the other side over by Moore Park. It's unfortunate what's happened out there, but this particular project does not contribute to that kind of visible pollution. I'm a little bit saddened that this should have been a celebration of unprecedented city open space acquisition, and not a debate on the city's not doing more. I can't help but think how many other open space parcels on the city's list will not be purchased as a result of these purchases, because we've spent the money that we had. But it was a good expenditure, and it was for the right reason. The wildlife corridor has been protected, and that was the main intent and the main goal all along. So I will support the motion. Mr. Fox, the maker of the motion? Any comments? Please vote.
Motion carries four-one. Councilmember Bill de la Pena dissenting.
Thank you. It's twenty after nine. At this time, we will take a fifteen-minute recess until, or twenty-minute recess until twenty of it. I would ask the council, please be back at twenty of, so we can begin the next hearing.
In his master's step he trod, where the snow lay tinted. He twas in the very sod, which the saint had printed. Be for Christ a manly choice, well for I'm possessing. Be who loves a glass the poor, shall yourselves find blessing? Ah. One, two, three, go! Run, run, Rudolph, Santa's making it in the town. Yeah, I'm making hurry, tell him he can take the freeway down. Run, run, Rudolph, it's visit like a merry-go-round. Yes, Santa to the younger, what have you been longing for? All I want for Christmas is a rock and roll electric guitar. Yeah, run away with Rudolph, it's visit like a savior's dance. Run, run, Rudolph, Santa's gotta make it to town. Yeah, I'm making hurry, tell him he can take the freeway down. Run, run, Rudolph, it's visit like a merry-go-round. Yeah, now see what! Santa to the younger, what would feed you most gifts? A little baby doll that can cry, scream, drink and wear, yes. Run away with Rudolph, it's visit like a savior's dance. Run, run, Rudolph, Santa's gotta make it to town. Yeah, I'm making hurry, tell him he can take the freeway down. Run, run, Rudolph, it's visit like a merry-go-round. Yeah, now see what! Santa to the younger, what would feed you most gifts? A little baby doll that can cry, scream, drink and wear, yes. Run away with Rudolph, it's visit like a savior's dance. Run, run, Rudolph, Santa's gotta make it to town. Yeah, I'm making hurry, tell him he can take the freeway down. Run, run, Rudolph, it's visit like a merry-go-round. Run, run, Rudolph, it's visit like a merry-go-round. Run, run, Rudolph, run, run, Rudolph. Run, run, Rudolph, run, run, Rudolph. Woo!
Here comes Santa Claus, here we come, here we come. Here comes Santa Claus, here comes Santa Claus, here we go, here we go. Up on the house, up there, dear boss, I'll jump the old Santa Claus. Down to the chimney with lots of toys, all for everyone's Christmas joy. Still, he has just one desire, that he gets a new best job. But he wants a guarantee.
That he won't play hard okay.
Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Up on the house, up there, click, click, click. Down to the chimney with lots of toys, I say, ho, oh, oh, who went go? Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Up on the house, up there, click, click, click. Down to the chimney with lots of toys. Here comes Santa Claus, here comes Santa Claus, here we come, here we come. Here comes Santa Claus, here comes Santa Claus, here we go, here we go. Jack is almost six feet tall, but no, he's not at basket low. Bring him a basket three feet tall, maybe he'll play like a pro. My little gray shirt's so thin, he'll tap to his socks again. He's always dancing as you know.
So bring me some shoes with lots of holes.
Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Up on the house, up there, click, click, click. Down to the chimney with lots of toys, I say, ho, oh, oh, who went go? Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Up on the house, up there, click, click, click. Down to the chimney with lots of toys. Ring-a-ding-ding, ring-a-ding-ding. Oh, 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 who went go? Oh, 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 who went go? Up on the house, up there, click, click, click. Down to the chimney with lots of toys. Ring-a-ding-ding, ring-a-ding-ding.
Good dancing, 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 big, slow and coming. Giggling, down in a glee, to the top of the porch, to the top of the wall. Now, dance away, dance away, dancing away.
Did you read Santa Claus' my list?
Other girls should wait in the kiss.
Mine, that list was only a joke.
Too late, Jermaine, he's bringing your mistletoe.
Bet you just want toys and stuff.
Yeah, but that's not even happening. What I want is more than fun.
What's that?
Love and peace for everyone.
Up on the house, up there, standing, waiting for that hero man. Up to the chimney with lots of spare, and lots of Christmas toys to share. Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Up on the house, up there, click, click, click. Down to the chimney with lots of toys. Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Yeah, 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 yeah! Up to the chimney with lots of toys. Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Up on the house, up there, click, click, click. Down to the chimney with lots of toys. Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Up on the house, up there, click, click, click. Down to the chimney with lots of toys. Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Up on the house, up there, click, click, click. Down to the chimney with lots of toys. Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Ho, oh, oh, who went go? Up on the house, up there, click, click, click. Down to the chimney with lots of toys. Ring-a-ding-ding, ring-a-ding-ding. Come, they call me Boon-Boon-Boon. Our newborn king to see Boon-Boon-Boon. Our finest gifts we bring Boon-Boon-Boon. To lay before the king Boon-Boon-Boon. So to order him Boon-Boon-Boon. When we come. Baby, baby, zoo Boon-Boon-Boon. I am a poor boy too Boon-Boon-Boon. I have no gift to bring Boon-Boon-Boon. No gift to give our king Boon-Boon-Boon. Shall I pay for you Boon-Boon-Boon? On my job. The oxen lamb kept time Boon-Boon-Boon. I played my drum for him Boon-Boon-Boon. I played my best for him Boon-Boon-Boon. Then he smiled and he Boon-Boon-Boon. Me and my drum.
Just nuts rusting on an open fire. Jack Frost nibbing at your nose. Human type cows being sung by a choir. And folks dressed up like Eskimos. Everybody knows a turkey and some mistletoe. Help to make the season right. Tiny tats with their eyes on a globe. Will find it hard to sleep tonight. They know that Santa's on his way. He's loaded lots of toys and goodies for his sleigh. And every mother's child is gonna spy. To see if they're near, when they lose how to fly. So I'm offering this simple phrase. To cut from one to ninety-two. Although it's been said many times. Anyways, Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas. To you. Merry Christmas. Yeah.
Just hear those sleigh bells jingling, ring, tingling, tingling. To ring-a-ding, ding-a-ding. On this lovely weather, boys, sleigh ride together with you. Outside, the snow is falling and friends are calling you. Ring-a-ding, ding-a-ding. On this lovely weather, boys, sleigh ride together with you.
Ring-a-ding, ding-a-ding. Ring-a-ding, ding-a-ding. Ring-a-ding, ding-a-ding. Ring-a-ding, ding-a-ding.
Our cheeks are nice and rosy and comfy and cozy all week. We're still up together like birds off a feather with thee. Let's take a row before a cent, sing a chorus or two. On this lovely weather, boys, sleigh ride together with you.
Ring-a-ding, ding-a-ding. Ring-a-ding, ding-a-ding. Ring-a-ding, ding-a-ding. Ring-a-ding, ding-a-ding.
Our cheeks are nice and rosy and comfy and cozy all week. We're still up together like birds off a feather with thee. Let's take a row before a cent, sing a chorus or two. On this lovely weather, boys, sleigh ride together with you.
Ring-a-ding, ding-a-ding. Ring-a-ding, ding-a-ding. Ring-a-ding, ding-a-ding.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are back in session. Okay. Item eight, second public hearing. City Clerk, please open the hearing.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8B. Ratify implementation of Appendix 7 of Ventura County Fire Protection District Ordinance Number 25 pertaining to building standards requiring installation of fire sprinklers in new structures within jurisdictional boundaries of the city of Thousand Oaks. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for City Council and the official city records should be presented to the City Clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. I believe we have three cards. In pursuit to council standards, applicant, uh, excuse me, speakers are allowed five minutes each.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have a report by the building official, Dave Hewners, and Fire Chief Mike LaPlante. David, you first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. The resolution before you tonight is a necessary part of the ratification of a ordinance that was developed by the Ventura County Fire Protection District, which will enhance the public safety within the city of Thousand Oaks. The staff fully supports council approval of this. It will require that for new buildings, fire sprinklers be installed irrespective of the square footage of the building, with some exceptions. The fire district is here, available to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewners. Are there any questions of Mr. Hewners? Are there any questions of Chief LaPlante? Anything that he might add? There being none, we do not have speakers on this item. Without speakers, we have no follow-up questions. Second bite of the apple. Any questions of staff? Okay, there being none. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Open this for council discussion and a motion. Mr. Fox.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to adopt Recommendations 1 and 2 to adopt the attached resolution, which allows the Ventura County Fire Protection District to enforce certain building standards within the city of Thousand Oaks, and also file a copy of the findings with the fire district, together with the attached ordinance, Ordinance Number 25.
Thank you. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Item nine, 9A. Department reports Thousand Oaks Boulevard vision statement. Community Development Director, Mr. Prescott. Mr. Prescott, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association was tasked with the preparation of a long-range vision and specific plan for Thousand Oaks Boulevard. About a year and a half ago, maybe a little more than that, the City Council facilitated the formation of a business improvement district comprising properties along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, including those that the city itself and its redevelopment agency own. The principal purpose of that business improvement district, and which the Boulevard Association is working on, is the preparation of a specific plan or long-range planning for the future of Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The Boulevard Association has submitted the letter, which is attached to our report, along with their long-range vision for the Boulevard, and they are essentially seeking the City Council's endorsement that they are on the right track. They are in the process of hiring a consultant to prepare a draft specific plan for submitted to city consideration at a future point in time. And before they really put their money into that and the time and effort, they would like at least the conceptual nod from the council that this is something worth considering. And further to that, there are representatives from the Boulevard Association here to speak to the issue. Staff has reviewed it. It's consistent with prior planning efforts that we have attempted to generate and implement along the Boulevard in the recent past, within the last ten or fifteen years, but have not come to fruition. I think the approach here is different than those in that it is being organized and administered by the property owners themselves, rather than being perceived as something the city is imposing. So with those comments, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And also, as I noted, there are members of the Boulevard Association here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Questions? And, Mr. Prescott, Mrs. Irwin.
Can you go through the steps of what we would be doing? First, the council would basically endorse the idea, and then when would there be time for public input? When will there be a specific plan made up and/or put together? And would there be a Measure E vote with that if there are Measure E issues? How does all that work?
I'll let the representatives of the association speak to their process for developing a specific plan. But our understanding is that the, at a point in time, the association would submit a draft specific plan to the city, and then the city would, a specific plan is a legislative act that needs to be approved by the City Council and needs to be submitted first to the Planning Commission for recommendation, and there are public hearings at both stages there. Once the city received the draft specific plan, my understanding is we would be responsible for the environmental review process of that specific plan and the public hearing process, which could involve other public outreach steps beyond just the required public hearings. If there are Measure E implications, which the vision contemplates there could be, we would be able to address those at the time of those public hearings. If a general plan amendment were required, that would be brought forth with the specific plan. And depending on what that general plan amendment provided, there could conceivably be a Measure E issue in terms of increasing the residential densities as compared to the general plan as it existed in 1996, when Measure E was adopted. And if that were the case, then it would be probable that the amendment would have to be submitted to the electorate, if approved by the council.
All right. So if there, if there's a specific plan and it has Measure E implications, and then the electorate does not support the specific plan, then is, are there alternates that wouldn't have, or do I ask this to the Boulevard Association? Association? Would they develop an alternate scenario also where if the electorate turns down the specific plan, that they would have a backup plan? That doesn't have Measure E implications?
Well, I think that would be really highly unusual. Usually, the way the process would work is the specific plan would be submitted. That's like a project, and it would be submitted to the Planning Commission for Recommendation. The commission would make a recommendation to the city council, and then the city council would either approve it or deny it, or approve it with modifications. If it were approved, and if it did trigger Measure E, then it would have to be submitted to the voters for ratification. And I just think it would need to be a judgment called by the council and the proponents of the specific plan, the Boulevard Association, at the time of those hearings. And if there was a belief that, that, and if it did require a Measure E vote, and if there was a belief that, you know, could run into some significant opposition, I think it would be a cause for everybody to pause to see if that's what the council really wanted to adopt. But that is way down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott.
Okay. Additional, Mrs. Bill Daleopina.
Mr. Prescott, the, I was actually going through my staff trying to look for the slide presentation of the long-range vision and didn't see it. Could you go point by point so that everybody is on the same page and knows that we're talking about what is being presented?
Okay, I'll summarize.
I'm sorry. Can I get back in this conversation? The question was to Mr. Prescott. And if Mr. Prescott wants to defer to the merchants' association or the property owners, I'm more than happy to do that. But I need that response. The question was directed to you, Mr. Prescott. How do you want to respond now?
Well, I would call the council's attention to the 15 points that are on, your packet pages 168 and 169. Some of those, as we describe in our report, are kind of not really vision topics. But I think the Boulevard Association, and they can address this themselves, really sort of has some, some concepts that they want to let the council at least know that they intend to pursue through the specific plan process. But other than that, I mean, there's encouraging nighttime uses, outdoor eating, mixed use, efficient transportation, that sort of thing. And I will allow the, the people who put this together to elaborate on it and answer council questions about the specific items on the list.
Okay. Spelled out opinion. Is that?
That's fine.
You okay with that? Okay. Any additional questions of staff? There being none. Okay, we do have several speakers. Our first speaker, Mr. Phil Koontz. Followed by Cal Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. My name is Philip Koontz. I reside in Thousand Oaks. About nine years ago, I moved here with my nine-month-pregnant wife, looking for a place where we could raise our family in a safe, vivacious community that could offer the things that we felt contributed to a good quality of life. We've not been disappointed, and I'm very humbled to be standing here in front of the leaders of this community who have made the city what it is today. Professionally, I am a caring, compassionate, and creative mortgage professional. I am the president, CEO, and head janitor of PAC Financial Group, located within the, within the city limits. Tonight, though, I'm here specifically to speak about item 9A on the agenda of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Vision Statement. I am very privileged to serve this city as an appointed member of the Business Roundtable, currently serving as the vice chairman. We are a group of business-minded citizens acting as a forum on issues, policies, and perceptions affecting local business. On behalf of the Business Roundtable, I would like to commend the property owners, first of all, associated with the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, in taking the initiative to begin the process of building and revitalizing our Boulevard. Collectively, they have created these proposed guidelines for creating a vision for the future of Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association previously presented their vision to the Business Roundtable. We had the opportunity to discuss the vision, ask questions, and provide input. As a group, we support the guidelines set forth in their document. The city's last two community attitude surveys identified Thousand Oaks Boulevard as the number-one planning priority for the city. We need a pedestrian-safe, viable, and self-sustaining Boulevard for the sake of the city's future. In summary, and on behalf of the Thousand Oaks Business Roundtable, we encourage the city council to endorse the proposed long-range vision for Thousand Oaks Boulevard as prepared by the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Koontz. Cal Johnson. Followed by Rick Prinspe.
Mayor, city council. Mr. Mitnick and staff. My name is Cal Johnson. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks and president of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association. We're kind of excited at this moment in time because we've gone through about four years of work up to this point. The association was formed, which was the first step. This was, our membership involves about 220 property owners along the Boulevard. The next step was the formation of the Business Improvement District, which we received a lot of help and backing from the city itself, encouragement. And that was a milestone, because that means that our property owners had a vested interest putting up money to help the planning process for the Boulevard. The Boulevard has the city's name attached to it, Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Right now, except maybe for a couple of blocks along, outside our building right here, it's not a place that you'd really take your friend from out of town to show them your Boulevard. And that's why the attitude survey from our citizens says, for the last two surveys, that the Boulevard is the number-one item, from their standpoint, that deserves planning. And it needs to be a specific plan for that three-mile area. It's, right now, the number-one revenue producer for the city. And it's anchored by the Oaks Mall and the Auto Mall as the other two major revenue producers for the city. What we're interested in doing is coming up with a plan that makes a lot of sense to the residents and to the business owners. And we're starting with a vision, because I think we need a long-range vision before we get into all the specifics. You are the ones that are going to decide the specifics when we bring a specific plan back to you for your review. And this will be done after a lot of work with the city staff. We have a very excellent city staff, and I think the importance is to give them as much leeway as possible and not tie their hands when they're looking at our Boulevard, trying to come up with new concepts and new ideas to make things work. So that's what we want to start with, is the, is the vision. And if we can get a unanimous approval, we think that will go a long way, encouraging the property owners to continue their effort on the Boulevard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions of Mr. Johnson? Yes, if you could wait for just a minute. Mrs. Bill Daleopina.
Good evening, Mr. Johnson. I'm not certain who would be able to answer the question which I posed earlier about what the long-range vision is for Thousand Oaks. Would that be you, or would that be someone else who will be speaking tonight, to go, to go over the long-range vision as outlined in our staff report?
I can certainly try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. I'm just asking whether you or one of the other board members could go over the long-range plan, point by point. Is that, would that be you, then?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
I think if you have specific questions, that may facilitate the thing.
Okay. What I will do, then, is, there are 15 points, and there are the, there are 15 points, as I stated. The first one is to give priority and consideration to improve the parking along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, encourage the creation of plazas, public art, and open spaces that are linked to the public sidewalk system, implement traffic-calming devices and programs, and evaluate alternative modes of transportation. The second point deals with modifying current regulations from rigid, limit-based controls to incentive-based, flexible controls. Can you elaborate on that? That probably also goes hand-in-hand with item number three, which is to allow for flexible building heights.
I think the purpose here is to provide flexibility, meaning that we want to think outside the box and allow the planners, these are the people that we're paying, the city is paying, to look at things. Right now, with our existing ordinances and so forth, if you confine them, if you've ever processed plans in the city, it's fairly rigid. You can't do anything outside the box. So what this is doing is saying, let's think about some of the ways that have been very successful in other cities, where they have achieved planning and new development, redevelopment, revitalization of areas. And sometimes it pays to give incentives. So that you, and what those incentives are, that depends upon the plan and the location and so many other things. So we're not being, we're not trying to be specific here. We're saying, these are broad measures to help in the planning process. And that's, that's, I think, what this is talking about here.
Okay. On page two, the same document, items five and six, deals with Measure E and state law. It is, the long-range vision, it appears to me, is that, in compliance with Measure E and state law, that higher density be allowed, higher-density residential housing along certain sections of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and to encourage housing for all levels of income with incentives for low to moderate income. This is an effort, it says here, to reduce commuter traffic on our freeways and reduce pollution and congestion. This is obviously mixed use, combining residential with commercial. Any idea how many levels you were, you are contemplating, or how many stories you are contemplating?
No, I think the, this is, again, in a matter of a very broad picture. It's not meant to be a specific plan in itself. What we're, what we're talking about is, within the guidelines, the Measure E and the state law, we want to try to, again, we have various parcels on the Boulevard. Some are very, very deep. And right now, they are storage areas for old cars, for all types of things. If you drive beyond just the face of the buildings in the back, it's a hodgepodge. Some of these areas can be developed effectively if you, again, come up with good planning processes to allow, in some cases, housing or apartments or condos or whatever it is. In those areas, right now, they're not allowed. So you have to think about those possibilities.
The term Measure E was mentioned a few times already tonight. Are you at all willing, then, to comply if need be, and it appears there may be, with Measure E, and ask for a vote of the people in order to implement a specific plan, which you have envisioned?
Certainly. You, we're obligated, as a community, to work within Measure E or to go to the citizens for a change to Measure E, if that's required. And that's downstream, when there are specific plans that can be presented to the voters, if that is an issue.
Thank you.
Is that, are you done? Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Fox?
Thanks, Mr. La. First, let me just thank Cal, you, and everybody that worked on this. We've, I think a lot of folks that have been dealing with the Boulevard for the 12 years that I've been around, know that we've had a number of attempts, a number of studies. My office is filled with books and, and all kinds of different options and opportunities to do something on the Boulevard. And I think you guys did a great job of, you know, putting a lot of work together. And the document that we have, I think you said it good, it, it starts to create a conversation about what could happen and provide some flexibility. So looking at the specific plan, which the Boulevard absolutely needs, we start, in a sense, with a clean palate, and then look at what can we do as a community on the Boulevard. And I guess that's my question. Not so much a statement, although I, you know, the question I have is, apart from this two-page document, what's the process that you guys are suggesting, or have you had a discussion about how we start to engage the community in this discussion? Or are you looking at simply using the Boulevard Owners' Association as kind of the, the think tank and the work group that will bring recommendations to the council, and then ultimately, the specific plan?
We have gone through the process of interviewing four different planning firms that have worked on similar plans for other cities. And we have selected a, such an organization. We've entered into a contract with them. And we're not, we're business people, property owners. We're not planners. But we, we need help and direction, and we felt that we needed a professional firm to help us, guide us through this process. And when we get to a certain point of a, where we have some, some bones and a little meat on it, so we can then go to the city staff and get it, get their input in a collaborative effort. It was being suggested, well, let, let the staff do it and come back to us. Well, that's the way it's been done before. And the reason it doesn't work, it's, when it's top-down, it has a different effect than when it's bottoms-up. And since we're not planners, and the staff are working 24/7, they're paid to do this day in, day out, they are miles ahead of us. So we have to kind of catch up. As business people, we have to understand the process, we have to understand the problems, we have to try to get our hands around that, and come to the city with issues that we feel have to be solved. And then the planners at the city can give us input and back and forth. We then, I think, can come up with a collaborative plan. So when we come back to you, you have a lot of the answers. I mean, you can, we have a lot of the answers to your questions. Right now, we don't have a lot of your answers, because, you know, we're not there yet. So the Thousand Oaks is the redevelopment zone for the city. It's been designated that for many years. We haven't really attacked it like a redevelopment zone, though. It's, it's just an area that's under the same purview as the rest of the city. And we really have to give it some very, very special attention. And I think that that's the process we're going through now. And we want to, we're collaboratively with the city to get something done that we can all be very proud of.
Is the firm that you're looking at hiring, are they predominantly a planning firm to help assist, put together a draft-specific plan?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. My question really, Cal, goes to the process by which the elements of that specific plan are put together. I think you guys, for being just- of that specific plan are put together. I think you guys, for being just business folks, and I, and I say that with quotes, just business folks, you guys did a very good job of putting together kind of a blueprint, very thoughtful, you covered a lot of ground. But contained in this document are huge ramifications, as you point out. There are economic and finance ramifications. The boulevard is one of the top sales tax producers for Thousand Oaks. We need to be concerned about that. There are environmental considerations, traffic, parking, congestion, air quality. There are housing considerations that we need to look at. There are political considerations, and I say that in a, in a positive way, in terms of, what is the community's expectation for Thousand Oaks Boulevard? And there are civic concerns. And so each one of these fifteen items, in and of themselves, takes on a whole new, can have a whole separate discussion. And I guess what I'm interested in is a collaborative conversation about what process we would put together to bring some of the principles together that would help this planning consultant that you're going to hire start to put some color on the easel, so to speak. Because, again, I think the process that we're talking about here is really, really important. And, and I would be concerned about simply having council say, yes, we like what we see, move forward, in communicating in a way that what's on here is necessarily what we're going to end up with. And I think we need to be, you know, we need to be concerned with that. And at the same time, I'm going to say it bluntly, the last thing we want to do is throw a giant bucket of cold ice water on the good work that these folks have done. So we need to strike some type of balance with, with spearheading the process, so to speak, taking into good work that they have done, and at the same time, creating an opportunity for the community and the council to look at some of these things and, and do this in a thoughtful manner. If we get too far down the road, we're going to run into roadblocks. And, and I couldn't agree more with what Mr. Johnson said. The last couple of times, we did it from the top down. We had staff do it, and they did a great job, and it ended up being a disaster. The way they're proposing it is the right way. It does need to be bottom-up, not just with the property owners, though. Needs to be done with the community.
Well, I think that, if I may respond to that.
Yeah.
Part of our process is reviewing all of the documentation that has gone on before us, before us, because many of us have participated in dozens, if not hundreds, of hours of charrettes, et cetera, with planning firms prior to this, where the city has spent close to a million dollars. We have all those interviews, all those comments and suggestions that we're going over, and we will hold other things, other meetings, as we move along. So we're very cognizant of that. And what we're doing is, as businessmen, you don't want to create something that's not going to work for the city, because it's counterproductive. So we're very, very interested in the input process. But if we can bring it along, and then work with the city staff, right now, we already have given the outline that you have before you to eighteen homeowners' associations, as well as met with and discussed it with the Chamber of Commerce, and they have approved it. The Business Roundtable has approved it. So we've already taken a collaborative approach, because we know that's what you want, that's what we want. But we need an overall support system that, that this will give us. And that's what all these organizations that have already reviewed it are asking you to do, is give some overview approval, so that we can move ahead. You will have many, many bites of the apple, so to speak, because you're going to have to approve the specific plan. But let us do our work, let us, the city staff do its work, so that we can present to you something that we can all be proud of. And you will have many modifications, very possibly, but that, I think, is the process.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question. Not that anybody's looking for work here, but if the council were to be so inclined, at some point in the process, would the, your group be open to council participation by way of a council committee?
Certainly. I think that the, you have to realize that your presence is very strong.
I get it, right.
And it can, it can inhibit free discussion and, and ideas, because people are concerned about, you know, you're, you're there, or whoever the committee is, and, you know, then you're kind of running the process. However, if that's what you want, we'll work with it.
It's a, it's a double-edged sword, so to speak.
Yeah.
And I'm concerned, from some standpoint, you're exactly right, is that it clearly will inhibit some of the free, open discussions, because you don't want to have those discussions in front of folks that are ultimately going to be making a decision. On the other hand, I'm very...
Maybe the process would be, as we bring it to the city staff, and then start that process with the city staff, and getting it up to a point where we have a little more answers. But, you know, right now, because we're covering a lot of ground, as you pointed out, there's a lot of things that have to be discussed and evaluated. That's probably the time where a committee from the council would get involved and help give feedback. That'd be very, very fruitful, I think.
Yeah, I guess, Cal, where I'm coming from is, I'd hate to see a lot of money spent in an effort that, at the end of the day, and I'm not talking about at a council meeting where we're looking at a specific plan, I'm talking about early in the process, a substantial amount of money, your money, spent where there's issues and ideas that are, that are, you know, planned out, that the council and the community may have some concerns with. So that's, that's what I'm looking at. And, and I'll certainly defer to the, to the, to the council. Mr. Gillette and I have a fair amount of experience on the boulevard. And just remind you and some of the others, is that when we did the, the West Side, there was a tremendous amount of candidly distrust in what the city was going to do. We went and knocked on every door along the boulevard, and, you know, hindsight's 20/20. We did a great job there. "We," meaning the community, put a park in, did the upgrades. You know, now you don't have to necessarily, you know, believe what we say, you can see what we did. And so I think we built some momentum there. And I don't know if we would run into the same roadblocks with this process. And so I just throw that out for maybe some thought and discussion, and certainly want to hear from the other council members.
Yeah. My, my only concern is that, that the, if you get too involved in the control early on, the council will control it, and it'll be the council's project. And I think you want the citizens, the property owners, to do the work, to bring it up, the process, and, and filter out a lot of the issues. And some of the issues you may be concerned about get washed out early in the process, and not by you, but by the process. And once we get it to a certain level, it's not the final plan, it's just while it's something, we have something to, to discuss, then that's when I think the committee from the council could be extremely, extremely helpful, before we get into a final plan.
Just listening to this discussion back and forth, one thing that has served us quite well in the past, and at the risk of politicizing this process, which is the last thing we want to do. I remember one of our exercises where we were looking at zoning discrepancies, and we had the consultant all lined up and whatever, and we were going to start taking a look at that. And a couple of the property owners were just vehemently opposed to, and, and all of a sudden, the whole story got expanded and twisted out of shape. And the, the filed-down inversion of that, of what happened, was some nice street lighting, some ribbon hardscape, new benches, et cetera, et cetera. And that's as far as that process went. However, to get the kind of insight and input that you're, and assistance, I'm talking true assistance, we, we do have any number of elder statesmen now in this community that's been around for forty-plus years. And your organization may want to look to some of them. We've, they have served the city well in the past, have a, have a deep-abiding understanding because of projects that they've worked on. And that may be a very valuable resource, that is something, I'm concerned about, about individual council members, I'd love to do it, but I'm concerned about individual council members being involved, and what comes out of that process. So something that you may want to consider is calling on some of these folks who have multiple interests in the different institutions of the community, and a long historical understanding of the community, and that, that may serve this process well.
That's an excellent suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Clancy, I'm sorry, Mr. Fox, are you done?
Just, I just want to build on, that's the model that we use for the Oaks Mall, by the way, is we twisted some arms, we got Julie Lazar, Bob Lewis, who put a tremendous amount of time into that Oaks Mall project. And, you know, they'll, you know, they'll never say it, but they need to take a lot of, and there was a lot of other folks that did. But Judy and Bob brought their planning experience, their city council experience. They did a great job, along with the other members of that group. And I think Dennis has come up with a really good idea. They're distant enough from the council, but they certainly can bring that perspective, which I think would be really valuable to you guys.
Very, very good point. And I, and I want to congratulate the council for getting the Oaks Mall through the process, and a very successful process for, for the city, by the way. That's right on point.
Thank you. Dr. Clancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Johnson, I wasn't altogether sure if you envisioned having meetings with the public, several. You mentioned public hearings that would occur at planning commission meeting and city council meetings, but just meetings where the public could come in and share with you what they'd like to see on the boulevard. Do you see employing that?
Yes. I, I mentioned earlier that we're going to be, go beyond that, and try to capture the thousands, maybe tens of thousands of man-hours that have already been sought and obtained from prior studies. We have those inputs, and we're going to be reviewing all those. And we will have also input from the public at strategic points along the process. So it's a, we're business people, and yet, you know, the people you're going to serve, the people who are going to make the boulevard more successful, are going to be the citizens of our community. And so we have to deliver something that's going to really revitalize the boulevard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Spillad, opinion?
You mentioned charrettes earlier. Who in particular, well, I shouldn't say who, but were the members of the public involved when you held those meetings?
Yes. Oh, our meetings?
Yeah, for your charrettes.
Oh, no, I said that we may do some of those in our process. That's partially what I was talking to about Mr. Clancy. We've also had a lot of meetings in prior studies that have been taking place on the boulevard, where we had public input. And we're going to be utilizing a lot of that information, too. Because a lot of that's very valuable, and we don't, we don't want to just put it aside. Those, those reports, those studies, we want to try to get the best ideas out of them, so the city's investment is utilized.
There is no doubt that Thousand Oaks Boulevard does need improvement, and it is commendable that you have been working on a long-range vision as a norm or as a principle. I do not like for council members to get involved in something such as what you are proposing. And I do agree with you that that should be left to other citizens, as was already mentioned by my colleagues tonight. The more input one can get from the public at large, not necessarily the same individuals who have helped on other projects in the city, but also just fresh blood, other perspectives perhaps as well, the broader group we have, the better the end result, the better the product.
Yes, I, we agree, and I think we've demonstrated that already. As I've indicated, this vision has gone out to eighteen homeowners' associations, as well as the other business groups in our city for input and discussion. And so collaboration is part of our process.
Mrs. Irwin?
I want to also echo and my council colleagues, and commend you for moving forward with that. We've had a lot of false starts, and, and this is something really that the residents want, a viable, walkable downtown area. And hopefully, because it's driven by the property owners this time, it'll gain some traction. But what I'm wondering is, how does this work in, I mean, we're talking about process. Have you looked at how this has worked in other cities? Pasadena was able to revitalize their downtown, or Santa Monica. Is it, is it generally driven by city staff, by elected officials, by property owners? That might give you a good model.
Yes. Very good question. We asked that of, of the various planning firms that we interviewed, because I would say that the cities that they represented, when we looked at all four of them, were probably fifty, sixty cities across, you know, including Glendale and Pasadena, Santa Barbara, Camarillo, et cetera. And it's, that's what they do for a living, obviously. That's their business. And in some cases, it was the city leading the way. In other cases, it was the, a business improvement district. In some cases, it was a, an association. So it all, it was all different. The, the planners, however, all liked the idea that we were the grassroots group getting this thing started. It doesn't happen a lot, because a lot of cities want to control it, and they don't have the trust in their citizens to do a lot of the grunt work to get the thing up and running. And the planners that we interviewed were really amazed that Thousand Oaks was encouraging this process. And I think that's partially due to the, to the city council, and your city staff, and your city manager encouraging us and keeping it alive. Because when you have all volunteers, it's very, very tough to get them to turn out again, and again, and again, for meetings after meetings after meetings, because they have businesses to run. But if you can get that enthusiasm and that commitment, we really have a win-win situation. So we need the, you know, the encouragement and the support of the council and the staff, and I think we can help do our job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Irwin. Mr. Mitnick had a question, Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, more of a comment, an observation to, to echo the comments that Cal just made. Typically, what, what happens, what has happened on the boulevard over the last twenty-five years is there were studies done, hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money has been spent, probably over a million dollars. And what happens is, as soon as the studies or proposals hit the street, the business community comes up and says, but wait a minute, you didn't include us, and we're concerned about this, we object to that. So we've been down this path for twenty-five years and, and going nowhere. Lots of great proposals, great concepts, the business community, members who are in the audience here, may have been actually supportive of them if they were brought into the process early on. And the council often will direct and ask staff to work collaboratively and cooperatively with residential neighbors on, on housing developments or other projects. We took that direction and advice as staff, and tried to turn it on its head to deal with the business community, to listen to the property owners on the boulevard, and worked very cooperatively with them in this process. So I would just like to echo and stress that it's been a very good and collaborative process. Cal and Rick Princeby and the others have come to us along the way, and they've sought advice for consultants, for example. Asked if we had a list of consultants that they could solicit proposals from. We gave them a list, and they had other sources for that list. And it was hard for the planning staff, I'll just say, and John, we've talked about this, because this is a much different approach. There's usually, there's usually a confrontational adversarial relationship between the city and business owners. So we had to get past that psychological hurdle. And I think some of us are still struggling with that, but we're working to do that. So again, a very collaborative process, sharing of information. Cal has often bounced ideas off of us to make sure that what they were working on was, would be in compliance with Measure E and other local restrictions and so on. Also, the importance of community input was stressed multiple times along the way, and this group of business owners understand that. And there are many steps that we'll have to go through, many cracks at the apple... have to go through, many cracks at the apple, and they'll be before the council on numerous occasions. I just wanted to stress that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Johnson? Cal, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Prinspey?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman, glad to be here tonight. I also am one of those long, old-time cronies. I came here in 1963, actually, just before we became the city, and didn't even know what that was all about. But I've lived here with my family ever since, and it's been a great place and enjoyed it, and it's pretty hard not to be involved in a city like this, as you people are yourself. I've been on several committees for a long time, and of course, all of us know what Thousand Oaks Boulevard has been, and I think we need to realize, we're talking about a redevelopment area, and that's really key here, because it's redevelopment. We're not talking about something that's going to be citywide, we're not trying to come up with ideas of whether it's height or setbacks or parking citywide, we're talking about this redevelopment area that we feel needs some help. I think what really hit me several years ago, is I've probably been 10 to 12 years on the Mayor's Business Roundtable and committees, and we've been working with this, we went through all the charrettes, we went through everything, and nothing ever seemed to happen, nothing ever seemed to get done. And I remember one of our mayors, many years ago, Judy Lazar, at a meeting one day said something, and it really struck home, and she said, "Look, we have tried to come up with ideas and plans for the property owners on the Boulevard several times, and every time someone says we're going in the right direction, we go out on a limb, we come in the program, and then all of a sudden, the property owners come in here and say, 'That's really not what we want,' and this thing falls flat on its face continuously." She said, "If you want to succeed and get something through, what I'm recommending to you," now, this was when Judy was mayor, I don't recall how many years ago, "if you want to succeed, you, the property owners, go out, you put your heads together, you get your plan, you bring your plan to the city and tell us what you want, we'll work on your plan, and then you have a much better chance of getting that through, because we're going to support what you want." Well, that's what we did. And many times, I've been asked by different people from the city of, "What kind of subsidy programs could we use? What could we do to help develop this Boulevard? How could we change it?" We're not asking for subsidy programs, we're not asking for your money. Everybody put their money up where their mouth is, in essence. We decided that, we saw the plans, we saw the consultants the city had, and what happened is, we had the people who weren't affected trying to come up with the design and plan. And the analogy I always use for that is, if all of a sudden I bought a five-acre piece of property and I want to build a home on it, if I come to the city and say, "Look, here's my piece of property, draw on here what you'd like to see me build," and they're going to come up with something that they like, and if I go to five people, I'm going to get what five different people like, but maybe it's not going to work for me. But if all of a sudden, I could take this piece of paper and I could draw what I think I want, what I think I need, what I think's going to work, and then I could bring it to that same city staff, say, "Here's what I have in mind, can you look at it?" Now, they have something to work on, they could change it, they could alter it, they could modify it, but we have a plan, and that's what we've done. So, we're really happy that we got the city, the property owners, with the help of the city, to create the building improvement district and put up their money, which they're doing, and we, in fact, as of this last week, did sign the contract with RRM Consultants to do our specific plan, and the whole idea is, we have the vision here upon you that we think that if we could at least see this vision, and the vision's made up of elements. I know we talked about Measure E, that's one element. We don't know when that would ever happen, if it would happen, and that's all taken care of, because the measure itself says what the procedure is, but we're talking about elements. We're talking about elements of getting this redevelopment area redone. We want a business-friendly Boulevard, we want a pedestrian-friendly Boulevard, we want some restaurants out there in the evening, we want to be able to drive down the Boulevard and not be worried if we park our car there, because it's dark and there's not people around. We want to see activity, we want to see all these things happening, and again, make it a pedestrian-friendly. So, that's what we're really working on right now, and that's the direction we're going. So, our plan is that, and you asked about the process, the process is, we wanted to give you first this vision, so you could see that what we've done is said, this is our wish list, this vision, this is the direction we want to go. Now, we're spending our money, we're hiring our consultants to prepare a specific plan, which we're supposed to have the first outline within 90 days of, I believe, December 12th, and that specific plan will be presented to the city and the staff, this outline will be, so you know the direction we're going, and we're supposed to have the complete plan within 270 days. So, this is done, it's signed, we have everybody supporting it, and the property owners are all excited about this. It's the first time we've really been organized, and who knows better than what the property owners need than the property owners. We have taken all the input, as Cal said, from all the charrettes, from the people, the citizens, and all we're trying to do is bring this plan to the city, you, the people, and everything, say, "Here's what we would like to do, now, go to work on it. Tell us what we can do, what doesn't work, what works, or whatever." So, anyway, I know I'm getting carried away, and I'm not sure about the time, but we are really excited about this. We've been working on it a long time, we finally got to this point, which we didn't know we'd get to, and so all we're really saying is, we want your support in this vision, because we think the vision is where we're going.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Lupi Zunica?
Probably the best little Mexican restaurant in the entire world.
Well, I am one of those business owners, and I got on the wagon with my colleagues, and I am very, very excited. Now, I probably have been here longer than any one of you here. I was born here in, a long time ago. When my mom built the restaurant, March 22nd, 1947, we were the only ones here on the Boulevard, and over the years, I've seen some changes at the east end, at the west end, but nothing in between. And so, when I was asked to join my esteemed colleagues here about three years ago, I didn't quite know what was going to take place, because I have been, and my family has all been anti-girl, they wanted to keep Thousand Oaks exactly the way it was. Well, in joining my colleagues, I found out that what they want to do, what I want to do now, is very, very exciting. What we want to do is create a village atmosphere, where people aren't afraid to walk down the Boulevard at night, now that we don't have lions, tigers, and bears to worry about, and have it be very friendly, a very cozy place where people want to go to spend an evening. They want to go to the civic center to see a wonderful play, they want to walk down the street, they want to go across the street to see if it's a matinee, to see the gardens of the world, then after that, they want to go down to Lupi's Mexican Restaurant to have a nice little meal, and then maybe along the way, they'll stop into a little patisserie or a coffee shop. That's what we would like, in our wildest dreams, it's a wish list, and we're kind of just beating our way through it, but this is what we would like to have, and we really, really hope that you will embrace what our vision is. Thank you.
Lupi, Dr. Zunica, thank you very much. Suzanne Duckett?
Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. It's only been 12 years, maybe it'll be 12 more years, I'm hoping. The reason that most of the other cities deal with it in a different way is because you have to think of infrastructure first. You can't just go do a lot of building with mixed use and not think about the sewer. If you're going to have dense-packed housing, you need, you need a larger sewer. Now, along the Boulevard, we're going to need new pipes, and so, how long are the streets going to be dug up? And where are they going to be dug up first? And are you going to put the traffic, do all the traffic then, then do, put the sewer in? Put the pipes in after the traffic's all been rerouted? And how long is this disruption going to take, you know, how long is this all going to go on for? So, that's why you have to get a lot of these guys involved along with your little plan. Then, I haven't been as fortunate to live here as long as maybe some of you. I lived in Santa Monica for as long as I've lived here, and the reason that I left Santa Monica was because of dense-packed housing. I didn't move out here to live in Santa Monica again, but if you want Santa Monica, I'm happy to help you. Now, I want a lot of public restrooms, and with public restrooms, I want some showers in those restrooms. I don't want to see a lot of homeless peeing on the sidewalk and smelling that all the time, like you do in Santa Monica. Okay, so there are some things that we have to think about before we just do this nice And if you want homeless, I'm going to help you, I'll bring them in. I'll load up my car tomorrow and get it started. Thanks.
That concludes our speakers. We have one written statement card in favor of the proposal from the Boulevard Property Owners Association. All council members have reviewed that card. What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Fox?
Yeah, you know, I think we had a really good discussion tonight, and I was actually kind of energized by a good public discourse, and, Mr. Johnson, you did a great job. And I think one of the things that stuck out for me, anyway, was the statement you made about having some trust with your community. We are fortunate here at Thousand Oaks, and not just for the time and effort that you and your group put in, but in so many real and measurable ways, we're fortunate to have a very active community, whether it's volunteering at the hospital, or here at the Civic Arts Plaza, or any number of opportunities for our citizens to give back to their community. And in this particular case, I think what council heard was, we have the business property owners along the Boulevard who are putting their money where their mouth is, to take a line from Mr. Prinspey, and stepping up to do the heavy lifting, and at the same time, open and flexible and willing to have that time and effort also be inclusive of the greater community. That seems to make sense to me, and we've tried it other ways, hasn't worked out too good. I think the timing for this is perfect. Candidly, we just finished an election, and the community resoundingly said, "We like the way this city's operating." We have some other indicators. We have the Attitude Survey, which is frequently thrown around this council chamber by any number of folks to support whatever position they have. Thousand Oaks Boulevard has been on that for some time, and I think most folks can see that the greater community is looking for something to be done along the Boulevard. And what that something is, I think, remains to be seen, and I think your plan is flexible enough, and what we've heard here tonight is enough that I think this council should be taking the partnership step forward with you and your group and endorsing your plan inasmuch as it's a working document, this is a first step, you've done a lot of work, but rather than have this done from the top down, so to speak, I think we need to try a different dynamic, and the work that you've done, you should be proud of, the city should be grateful for the work that you have done, and I think we need to give this our full endorsement and move this forward, and have staff work with respect to process, but from my perspective, we hear a lot, listen to the community, we've heard the community tonight. We have heard the community tonight, and so, at least as represented by the property owners, which is a piece, it's not the only piece, but it's a piece that needs to start somewhere. So, I'm going to move that we support this recommendation to endorse a long-range vision for Thousand Oaks Boulevard, as prepared by the association, and ask the Boulevard owners to continue to work with staff, and at the appropriate intervals, come back to council with updates and status reports and some benchmarks. So, that's the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion. Mrs. Beldell, opinion? Comment to the motion?
I have the question for the city attorney. Ms. Albano, well, when the bid was formed, I forget the exact date the bid was formed, that in itself was controversial, because the city was the deciding player in exercising our voting right in order to give you enough votes so you could form a business improvement district.
No, excuse me, Mrs. Beldell, opinion, that's not accurate. That's not accurate. The city exercised its option to use its properties to allow a vote to go forward, to form a business improvement district.
And then, the vote was done among the...
What the city did by exercising its authority with its properties was allow a vote to go forward as to whether or not to form a business improvement district.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Just a clarification, thank you.
I do appreciate that. That was, that in itself was controversial when it did happen a couple of years or so ago, and I was wondering now, from the city attorney, whether it is, from a legal standpoint, appropriate for the agency, which has a direct interest in this, to actually vote on this?
If I think, if I understand it correctly, you're wondering whether the, because the city owns property in the bid area, whether we should vote on endorsing it, but I think that the city wears separate hats, and it's just like when the council brings forward, usually the council doesn't, but staff brings forward a project that's a city-sponsored project, the council will give its blessing to go forward, and even though, in essence, the council is the applicant, because the city is, the council ultimately votes on it, and it's a city project. So, it's a very similar thing here, so there, I don't see any impediment or really issue at all with the city voting to endorse a vision that's conceptual at this point in time, and even down the road, voting on a specific plan, because we have property within the district.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Additional comments to the motion?
Okay, I just have a quick comment, that to view what's occurred over the last couple of months, first was the submission of the mission statement, and there hasn't been any mention of that tonight, but the mission statement, to me, clearly laid out, here's kind of where we want to go, and that coupled with this vision, now starts to put a package together, which becomes the roadmap, and the kind of the rules of engagement which helps the organization move forward. So, the skeleton of the plan is starting to come together, and I absolutely advocate, because I've been involved in so many plans on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and seeing them end up with, "We don't like it, we don't want this, we don't want that," coming at this from the owner/business operator's perspective, and then bringing it back, because the process, the approval process will always be protected and always be the same, and all voices will be heard in that process, but this is the way to get there. So, Mr. Fox, maker of the motion, any additional comment? I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Beldell, opinion, another comment?
I actually did want to comment on the motion really briefly, that I will support the motion with the expectation that the public at large will be included, so that we have various viewpoints regarding it, and will also, of course, discuss whether Measure E will come into place, because high density along Thousand Oaks Boulevard is a serious issue in that it will change the landscape altogether of the city of Thousand Oaks, and that is something that we must seriously discuss with as many as, with as many of our residents as possible.
Thank you, and I have made my suggestion as to the possible utilization of some of our elder statesmen and some of our people that have the most insight and background and knowledge of how some of this came about to help work with this process. Mr. Fox is the maker of the motion? Mr. Fox is the maker of the motion?
Yeah, I just wanted, I know I speak for the council, in just saying thank you. You guys did a good job, and I know you're aware, there's a lot of work ahead, and we appreciate you taking the time and the effort to put something together. And, you know, hopefully, the timing is right, and everything's coming into alignment that we actually will see this come to fruition and get a specific plan that's endorsed by the community. And so I'm looking forward to this.
Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you. It's 10 minutes to 11:00. This is the closest break that I've had to ask for a motion to continue this meeting past 11 o'clock. A motion, comment to the motion, all those in favor?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Okay. Item 9B, fiscal years '07, '08, '08, '09, budget calendar. Mrs. Hong.
Mayor Gillette and council members, it's time again to plan for the next two-year budget cycle, and the Finance Department's proposing a budget calendar with key dates for the council to deliberate the budget and user fees. Today, the Budget Officer and other budget team members have been discussing policy issues with the city manager. City staff has already begun the process of getting the budget ready to incorporate council goals and benchmarking and performance measures. There will be major change in our budget document. Having the council goal-setting session early in the budget process is one of the important first steps that the council will be participating in. Subsequent, then, we will be adopting the, taking the council user fees study session to council in February. The capital improvement project study session in March. Water and wastewater fees public hearing will be in April. The adoption of the user fees and water wastewater fees will again be later in April. On April 17th, there'll be the study session for the operating budget and budget adoption on June 5th. The two-year budget process in conjunction with the financial strategic plan is an important strategic planning process requiring significant council and staff time. The budget calendar is the first step in the planning process. The Finance Department Budget Team members are here tonight. They are the ones that will be guiding this process. That's Brent Sekaito, our Budget Officer, and Ellen Rosa, the Office Supervisor, John Adams, the Deputy Finance Director, and myself. So the recommendation tonight's for the council to approve the calendar establishing the study sessions and hearing dates for the fiscal years 2007, '08, and 2008, '09 operating and capital budgets and user fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hong. Questions of Mrs. Hong? Mrs. Beldelapina?
I just wanted to thank staff very much for this wonderful outline and this budget preparation calendar. It's extremely helpful. I don't think we had this the last time. This is apparently the first time we're having this as detailed as this.
Well, we did do it two years ago.
You did do it as detailed as this one two years ago?
Yeah, we did a little bit more detail in the back as an attachment, I think, so you see what's going on behind the scenes.
But this is excellent to have this outline, and it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions of staff? Comments or motion? Mr. Fox?
Sure. I'd move the recommendation of staff to establish the study sessions and hearing dates for the fiscal years '07, '08, '08, '09, operating capital budgets.
Thank you. I have a motion. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Item 9C, Integrated Regional Water Plan, Integrated Regional Water Management Plan Adoption. Public Works Director, Mr. Watkins. Mr. Watkins?
Thank you, Mayor Gillette, members of city council. I'd like to introduce Dee Zink from the Cuyahoga Municipal Water District, although Dee is here really as a representative of the Watershed Coalition of Ventura County. Dee will take you through the Integrated Regional Watershed Management Plan. Before we did that, I had the request to do a quick description of what is a watershed. And so I just put together a couple of quick bullets. And really what a watershed is, is nature's boundaries for water resources, typically running along ridgelines. But they are all the areas within which the surface waters would flow within a common area. They provide a very natural planning area for water quality and resource management, because all the folks within those different watersheds are certainly going to be sharing a lot of different resources. And so that is really the foundation, the basis, for the Watershed Management Plan as it moves forward. This is the Cuyagos Creek, Santa Clara, and Ventura River watersheds. They're shown within Ventura County, along the southern end of the county, and then certainly in the extreme south end of that is where Thousand Oaks lies. About 80% of the city of Thousand Oaks falls within the Cuyagos Creek watershed. The 20% that's within the Malibu Creek is that portion of West Lake and portions of North Ranch. But by far, the majority of this city is within the Cuyagos Creek watershed. And with that, I will let Dee bring it, or take it from here.
Thank you so much. It's really a pleasure to be here this evening, and I know it's a late hour, so we'll try to get through this relatively quickly. I am Dee Zink. I do work for Cuyagos, but I'm also co-chair of the Watershed Coalition of Ventura County with Sue Hughes from the county CAO's office. And the reason it came about that way is that the Cuyagos Creek watershed steering committee voted, along with the Ventura County-wide Integrated Regional Water Management Planning Group, it's a mouthful, but I'm used to it now. They voted earlier this year to merge together and form, I shouldn't say merge, to form the Watershed Coalition of Ventura County. We didn't merge because the Cuyagos Creek watershed management planning effort is an ongoing effort, and this is just simply a way for us to collaborate together across the different watershed boundaries in the county and seek funding that otherwise we wouldn't be able to get. And that funding, the first pot of money comes out of Proposition 50, which you may recall was approved by voters in November of 2002. There's one chapter within Proposition 50, Chapter 8, which allocated $500 million for something called Integrated Regional Water Management Planning. This money is money that would otherwise not be accessible unless you were part of a planning effort. And so, Cuyagos Creek watershed management planning effort, which you're a part of, in fact, the group adopted a plan and then adopted its own Integrated Regional Water Management Plan along the Prop 50 guidelines, and your city adopted that Integrated Regional Water Management Plan back in July of last year. But what happened was, in the first round of funding, there was $150 million allocated for this Integrated Regional Management Planning, but over $1.4 billion in requests across the state. And so the Department of Water Resources looked at Cuyagos Creek watershed and our counterparts in Ventura County, the countywide group, and said, we'd really like you guys to pull together and consolidate your requests and return to the state. And so we were invited back to compete in the second round of funding, but we were invited back as a consolidated group, as were many other groups across the state. Let me go back a little just to remind everyone where the Cuyagos Creek watershed management planning effort began. We were formed in 1996, and the main purpose of the Cuyagos Creek watershed effort is to develop a resource management and a protection program for the entire Cuyagos Creek watershed. The participants in Cuyagos Creek are local government agencies like yourselves, environmental organizations, the agricultural community, business groups, and the public at large. And they have been working over these last 10 years to develop a number of different programs to address the resource needs in the watershed. They're run by a steering committee, which is again a stakeholder group, and there are six different subcommittees that are working on all of these issues, water resources and water quality planning, habitat resources, flood protection, land use planning, agricultural, and then trying to communicate with the public about the values in each of these. Of the programs that the Cuyagos Creek Watershed Management Group has been probably most known for over the past few years is a very large watershed characterization study, which got into the details of what kind of habitat do we really have, what species are here, what are their needs, what are the water quality standards that really are creating challenges for us in terms of compliance as cities, and also in terms of trying to assure that we are protecting our habitat, restoring it, and coming up with water resources and water supplies that are actually attuned to the beneficial uses in the region, for example agriculture. So we've worked, and your city has been a significant contributor to the efforts to develop water quality standards in the form of total maximum daily loads for nutrients, toxicity, metals, these are all different standards for the quality of the water that we have in the region. And then numerous capital projects and other projects that have to do with how we actually operate within the watershed. The goals of the watershed plan are to improve water quality, to increase our water supply and reliability for this region, habitat restoration, enhance flood protection, more recreational and community outreach, but more recreational opportunities. Avoidance of penalties really goes to the issues of waste discharge for wastewater entities that have discharge requirements. This is our effort to work in a regional capacity to address these challenges as opposed to having individual cities address them on their own. And then, of course, sustainable water resources. But all of these programs and efforts take money. And where we've been getting money is we've been working through state and federal grants and loans, local water rates and user fees in the case of water supplies. We've been working with conservation organizations like the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, who's an active participant, and then several propositions that have been passed by California voters over the last few years that are listed in your presentation. Chapter 8 of Prop 50 being the one that we're competing for right now. So the Watershed Coalition of Ventura County was established, and we were invited back to compete for a $25 million grant. Out of that grant, because we were consolidating two different efforts, we requested that 50% of the funds come for the Cuyagos Creek projects, which the other folks in the other watersheds agreed with. We just heard about two weeks ago, or last week ago, that we are in fact going to be awarded a $25 million grant. So we're one of seven regions in the state of California to receive one of these $25 million grants. So we're all excited about that. We will actually get official word of that from a hearing at the State Water Board in January of this year. But it's only the beginning. And in order for us to receive this money that's already been approved, we have to have an adopted Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, and that is what is before you this evening. All the entities that have projects included in the plan and the region itself have to adopt the plan. So who is the Watershed Coalition of Ventura County? Well, there are 60 watershed coalition stakeholders? Yes, I'm, okay, I'm trying. 60 different organizations, they're listed there. One of the things that I do think is important that I convey to you tonight is that this is a bottom-up run organization. There's a steering committee, but it's really watershed-driven. And so all of the decisions that are going to be made for project activity and planning come from the watersheds themselves and then filter up to the steering committee of the Watershed Coalition. It's consensus-based, and that's important because each of our watersheds in Ventura County are significantly different. They don't have the same kind of water resources, they don't have the same land use planning ideals, et cetera. So respecting local authority is important. There are 11 projects total in this first grant that got $25 million. Five of them are in the Cuyagos Creek area. One that I know is of interest to this city is funding for the Brine Line, which will enable other projects that the city of Thousand Oaks has in mind for the future, will enable some of those projects to come onboard. And our timeline is that we're trying to approve the plan right now and in time for January 1 deadline of this year. What the plan is really for all of us is it's a gateway to a pot of funds that we would not have access to if we don't have an adopted plan. Going forward, we have another round of funding in June of this year. Another $200 million will be released statewide. And yes, we have future bond money. And with the passage of Proposition 84, the Los Angeles Ventura region alone will have $215 million earmarked for Integrated Regional Water Management Planning. So really what we're asking is for you to continue to participate with this. This plan that you may have received a CD or copy of is a living document. It's something we're going to continue to be amending and upgrading, and it's really a portfolio of options for us to choose to manage these resources. So we would like to have you participate. The website's there. You guys all know, I think, how to get ahold of me, and I'm happy to answer questions at any time.
Dee, thank you very much. Any questions? Council, any questions? Action? Mr. Fox?
Thanks for that report. Ribbeting, just ribbeting. I move the staff recommendation...
He means that in a good way.
Yeah.
Yeah. By the way, I've had a chance to read that big book. Council may want to think about doing that. It's got some tremendous information in there about water quality, watershed management. It's very good. Anyway, I'd like to...
Some of us have to share our interests with the Malibu watershed.
Absolutely. Just encourage the council to really do its homework, because that's important stuff there. I would move to adopt the attached resolution, adopting the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan as prepared by the Watershed Coalition of Ventura County.
Thank you. We have a motion. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dee. Thank you for coming down tonight. Item 10, Redevelopment Agency Reports, none. Excuse me. Committee Commission Board Reports, none. Council Issues, Recommendations, Follow-Up Reports on Meetings, Conferences Attended by Council Members, Ventura County Council of Government, VCOG, Update, Council Member Erwin.
Okay, and you will see here the minutes of the last VCOG meeting, and I will just, it was interesting that Dee was talking about respecting local authority is important because apparently the state of California doesn't really think so. I will point to the, we're going to have a separate agenda item for the RENA numbers. And basically, the RENA numbers are the number of housing units that the Ventura County is expected to absorb. SCAG came up with our initial number for Thousand Oaks, which was 1,072 units, and this is basically consistent with the Thousand Oaks General Plan. Subcommittee of VCOG got together and adjusted the numbers with, well, we're not sure what kind of criteria they used. And now our numbers range from 4,800 to 5,400 units, and those numbers are way beyond our capacity according to our zoning. So we have a real issue with these numbers. Like I said, it's going to be a separate agenda item, and the following events will take place. We're going to have a city letter to SCAG conveying our concerns, and then there's going to be a Community Development Director's Meeting. Actually, did that hap, yeah, that's coming up. Staff update at the City Council meeting on December 5th, and then a city manager's meeting. And we will do everything we can to get these numbers down, but there's all sorts of implications for the city if we are going to be expected to absorb 5,000 housing units. So we will be kept up to date on that.
Thank you. Is there a, is there a, comments to the report? There being none. Is there a motion to receive, receive the report? That is the motion. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 12B, Oak Tree Dedication, Former City Manager Mary Jane Laz. Mr. Fox?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. As council has in their packet, I provided a memo that we authorize the city staff to move forward with the preparation for a dedication of an oak tree in the Courtyard of the Oaks for our former city manager, Mary Jane Laz. I think council's aware of Ms. Laz's achievements and accomplishments through her 23-year work here in the city of Thousand Oaks. Outline in the report are a number of things Ms. Laz took a leadership role in, and I think it's just safe to say to summarize, we would not have the city of Thousand Oaks were not for somebody like Mary Jane Laz. The oak tree, I think all council's aware, is right next to the oak tree that we dedicated for city manager emeritus Grant Brimhall. And as most people know in the community, Mary Jane was the assistant city manager for many years. for many years to Grant. So it's completely appropriate that both the location and the placement of this honor for Mary Jane be as outlined. And so I'm sure there'll be a formal ceremony when we actually dedicate the tree to Mary Jane, but I would ask the council to support this recommendation and motion that we authorize staff to dedicate the oak tree next to the Grant Brimhall tree in honor and out of thanks to Mary Jane Lazz.
Thank you. I have a motion. Did that motion also include encouragement to all council members to adopt an oak... No, I'm sorry. I was reading something else into it here. I missed that. Yes, Mrs. Irwin, you do have your oak tree and I have mine, but that's not the point. So we have a motion. Comments to... And Mrs. Bell, you have two oak trees. There we go. Dr. Glancy'd like to know if he can have one of yours. Sorry about that. She has two, she has twins. Okay. I believe we have a motion. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
I apologize for just a minute. I did have a speaker card on this, Mr. Nick Kidway. And as I looked out, I didn't believe Mr. Kidway. I don't see him out there. So I just want to make sure he knows he was offered his opportunity. Item 13, city manager. Mr. Mitnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, by way of follow-up from requests from the public, we had one speaker who commented with allegations that the council meeting announcements on the homepage for upcoming events are not sufficient and so on. And so I think council, you've gotten some emails on that from this individual. For the record, the city clerk is pointing out to me that all city council meetings for 2006 and 2007 have been scheduled and posted on the city's full calendar as soon as the calendar is approved by council. And there were comments made about the state of the city not being articulated. That was fully articulated. In fact, it was sold out. As far as announcements, upcoming issues, a couple of things worth pointing out. The Robert, for council members of the public, the Robert Redford presentation that was scheduled for December 4th has been rescheduled due to filming conflicts for the actor. It's been rescheduled from December 4th to December 14th. So go to the city's website, there's more information about that. And for council's benefit, we are going out of our way to inform all the ticket purchasers of that change. Tom Mitzi Shop does have a way to do that. And for members of the public, if you're concerned about that, you can call Sharon Lawrenson at 449-2725. That's 449-2725. And the city does apologize for any inconvenience. As mentioned earlier, Cal-Am and Cal-Water, I think it was mentioned earlier, if not, Cal-Am and Cal-Water, two water companies that serve two different portions of the city are undergoing significant rate increases. They're going through a process with the California Public Utilities Commission. Residents are concerned about these rate increases. You can contact either company or go to the city's website to get more information. It's important that your concerns are heard by the CPUC. The next city council meeting will be next Tuesday, December 5th. Oh, I did want to point out that earlier today, the mayor did give his annual State of the City presentation at the Chamber of Commerce, an annual event at the Los Rovels Golf Course. And it was a sell-out, over 260 people were there and copies of that presentation have been shared with the council. It was very well-attended. Okay, on December 5th, there will be a couple of public hearings. One deals with the annual residential development allotments. 82 units are included as part of the Syntex project. And there will also be a department report on the countywide stormwater quality program implementation agreement, as well as the Rancho Canal Boulevard property exchange agreements will be coming to council. And also, an update on the regional housing needs assessment numbers. The next council meeting after that would be on December 12th and that will be the annual reorganization meeting. And the only item, well, it would be the reorganization and the election results will be confirmed. And the next meeting after that will be in January. That is it. By way of city manager, follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Item 14, closed session. We have no closed sessions called this evening? That's correct. At this time, item 15, our adjournment. And tonight, I will adjourn this meeting in memory of Mark Andrew Lund, son of Planning Commissioner Mark Lund. Our thoughts are with the family at this time. At this time, we adjourn to our next meeting, regular meeting, December 5th, 2006.